Good afternoon and welcome to the Housing and Economic Development Committee. I am James Torrance, Chair of the Committee and Representative of the 7th Council District. Today, the committee will hold hearings on 25080 interim foreclosure of vacant structures and nuisance properties, as well as legislative oversight, 250018 homeless services. In attendance today are members of the committee are Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Vice Chair from the 14th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And also, a non-member of the committee but always welcome here, Councilwoman Felicia Porter of the 10th District. Members of the mayor's staff, Nina Femilis. I do not see anyone from the council president's staff, but I'm sure someone will come. In addition to that, a host of agency professionals. Let's begin. Bill 250080, for the purpose of authorizing certain properties located in Baltimore City identified as vacant structures or nuisance property under Baltimore City Building Code to be subject to a certain interim foreclosure process, requiring certain procedures for an interim foreclosure, requiring the city to take certain actions to compensate the interested parties in the property that is acquired through interim foreclosure, specifying the circumstances under which an interim foreclosure judgment may be reopened, making confirming changes, defining certain terms, as well as generally related to interim foreclosure of vacant properties in Baltimore City. This bill was introduced on July 21, 2025, sponsored by Councilwoman Ramos. Comments from the chair will be skipped over. We'll go directly to the bill sponsor, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks for holding this hearing today. I want to welcome everybody to City Hall this afternoon. I am grateful to have the opportunity to introduce this bill again. I did introduce it last term, but very excited to be able to do it this term. Let me just begin by saying that according to the DHCD dashboard yesterday, I did not check it today, but yesterday, 12,336 vacant and abandoned structures are in Baltimore City, and those are the ones that are marked with the vacant building notice, and so they have a red square on the code map. And approximately 13,000, 15,000 vacant lots. There has really been amazing progress to lower the number of vacant and abandoned properties to the tune of about 1,000 per year in the last few years, and that is absolutely amazing. And part of what we're trying to do here is to continue that momentum. The city government only owns about 7.8% of the abandoned structures and about a third of the vacant lots. And so what that means is that they're owned by private owners, some of whom are not responsive and also not paying the taxes. And so we came up with and worked together on several years ago, the creation of INREM, what I call INREM 1. And that is where the liens exceed the assessed value of the property, and this has to be a vacant property or a vacant lot, then the city can foreclose to be able to work with the community on what the outcomes of the property are going to be and get them into the hands of someone who will do the right thing with them and have the liens completely extinguished. And according to 2025 lien data from the Department of Finance, 28% of the current vacant and abandoned structures are eligible for this INREM 1 foreclosure and 48% of the vacant lots. And so, so far, because we have been implementing INREM 1 for the last two and a half years, it has been, I think, going well. We've learned a lot. There's a lot more to go, but we have, as the city, acquired over 569 vacant and abandoned structures and lots utilizing this new process. That also is a much faster process than before, and we're utilizing INREM as our major acquisition tool. And I'm grateful to have been working on this with the administration from the beginning to get this done. And also, we have a special relationship with the Circuit Court to be able to have these cases in a dedicated docket. And so the next step is really to get to a place where we're filing 200 cases a month, or about 70 to 100 cases, as we heard in the hearing the other day. And that will include adding more staff, but also, and lawyers, it would also include expanding the court capacity, which we have been working on together as well. So what you have before you is the next step. 25-0080 is what I call INREM 2. And it happens to be Section 8.2 in the code, just to kind of keep it all organized. And so this is when the city can foreclose on a vacant and abandoned property or vacant and abandoned lot, when the liens are below the assessed value of the property. And at the end of the foreclosure, the city would still have to compensate the owner the difference between the liens and the appraised value, not assessed value, appraised value, to avoid a taking. And utilizing the same data that my office analyzed, the 50% of the privately owned vacant and abandoned structures and 23% of the privately owned, we're just talking privately owned, vacant and abandoned lots would qualify for INREM 2 actions. And so we do not have to, with INREM, the other piece that works really well is that we don't have to auction the property off to the highest bidder, but in INREM 2, we would need to have that compensation either through an auction or through assigning what the value is and paying the difference between the liens and the appraised value. And I will say, I want to give credit, of course, to the General Assembly for allowing us to do this by putting together for INREM 1 in 2019 to pass the authorizing legislation. And we worked together as, when I became the councilperson, and also with the administration and DHCD, to pass the authorizing legislation for INREM 2. We worked together on it. I actually just looked through all the old emails where we were working together on this, because we felt like together, we needed this tool to be able to acquire more vacant and abandoned properties, to do the work that needs to be done for whole block outcomes, and also to make sure that we're, what we acquire, we can make sure that we're defending our city against those that want to take, that want to, you know, commit fraud and to take advantage of our neighborhoods. So it was really important to address it. Now, so this is the whole point of the bill. Colleagues, you'll notice in your packets that I've created a couple of appendices. One is just a chart that kind of summarizes the difference between INREM 1 and INREM 2. The other are some maps, hopefully they're in color for you, that with the data I provided, we were able to look at, and the mayor's office of performance and innovation provided maps for the properties that are eligible for INREM 1 and INREM 2. And there's an interactive map, which I sent you the link for. And then Appendix C is a chart that has synthesized data of what is INREM eligible for each district, along with an explanation of the data, because there are some data challenges that I'm not going to go into. But based on the analysis conducted by my office, utilizing this Department of Finance data, the full complement of INREM tools, the city could acquire 78% of the privately owned vacant and abandoned structures and 71% of the vacant lots in our city. And that's significant, because we want to be able to, again, have those whole block outcomes. There's also part of the INREM 2 bill that talks about nuisance properties. And when we talk about nuisance properties, this isn't the properties where there's loud music and there's, you know, things that neighbors are not happy with. These are properties that, in our building code, are defined as a vacant lot or improved property determined to be vacant or a nuisance property. That's on the state code. The city code talks about a nuisance property that is an unoccupied structure that has violations that have not been abated, I'm paraphrasing here, but you can see in my written testimony the exact definitions. And also that there's an unoccupied structure, again, with there are unabated problems, sanitation problem, you know, that the, haven't picked up the trash, have not, you know, addressed a falling down porch, that kind of thing. And I've asked DLR to draft legislation to further define nuisance as those with outstanding liens, no utilities, and no mail delivery. I'd like to really focus, however, our conversation around the fact that INREM 2 is about addressing vacant and abandoned properties and that are designated vacant and abandoned properties where the liens are below the assessed value of the property. So in my testimony, I'm also reacting to the bill reports, which I guess we'll get into when we have the bill reports stated. I just want to say that the Law Department was concerned about a taking and that we need to address the, and make sure that we're creating and determining what the full market value is of the property. And so I'm prepared to take their amendments. They are not ready yet, so we're not voting today. I also looked at what we did together with the administration and DHCD to determine how we could address the constitutional issue while we were negotiating in Annapolis, and I pulled those emails from the legal team in the General Assembly as well. And so the Department of Finance outlines and really focuses on this nuisance issue and has a couple of things that are in the report that I don't really understand, so I'm looking forward to asking those questions. And then DHCD is coming out, coming in with an outright oppose, and they really focus on the nuisance piece, although I think that they might have some other arguments. But here we are, that this is, I think, one of, one of the key pieces of legislation and strategy to accomplish our whole block outcomes, to be able to make sure that we're addressing vacant and abandoned properties, and more importantly, protecting our residents and our neighborhoods from those who would do harm. And so, Mr. Chair, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to give some remarks. I did submit pretty extensive testimony, as you all know I like to write, and happy to answer any questions from the, from the committee and from the members. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I want to recognize that we've been joined by Councilman Antonio Glover of the 13th District. Also, we've been joined by Councilman Zach Blanchard of the 11th District. And also, we've been joined by Councilman Jermaine Jones of the 12th District. Thank you, gentlemen. With that being said, we'll go into agency reports. Law Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Law Department looked at the bill, and we recognize that the General Assembly has authorized this type of INREM process. And so I think that a court is going to take that into consideration and give it a lot of weight. However, it can't really override a takings issue. And so there are probably two main areas that need to be amended, and because these amendments are significant, we want to work with the sponsor and obviously DHCD to make sure that they are right. And I say right, not necessarily legally right, but there are probably many legal ways to solve those problems. The question is, what do you want? So we're not trying to shove our paradigm on this process. And the two main things is to make sure, you know, again, we're in a world of a potential taking only because we're talking about properties that have value over and above the lien. So we have to be clear that we're not in a tax sale situation. Tax sale, we're not selling property, we're selling a lien, we're telling, we're selling the tax liens, and then the actual property is sold later under a different process in terms of right of redemption. And then INREM process is not the primary cause of action in a court, it's a remedy in order to get paid. So it's, you don't file an INREM action because you have the right to INREM, you file it because you have an underlying right. And so that's usually with the liens, and if the liens exceed the value of the property, obviously, the government or the lien holder's interest is basically larger than the property owner's interest. So it's a much more, you know, it's a much different process, because, again, the defendant in the case is the property, and so you're really just trying to get yourself paid. The great collateral result of that is obviously that you end up dealing with vacant properties and nuisance properties, because those are ones in which the lien exceeds, you know, the liens exceed the value of the property. When you have extra value over and above the liens, it's going to be interesting to see what a court does with an INREM process in those cases. They may be quite fine if the equity is very low relative to the liens. If it isn't, though, basically, the Maryland and federal constitutions require two things to prevent a taking. One is basically compensation, and you have to compensate, you know, just compensation, quote unquote, which has really been defined in Maryland as fair market value. And then you obviously have to have the ability to come in and kind of contest that fair market value. The other thing, of course, is you have to have a public purpose. And in traditional condemnation cases, public purpose is on a case-by-case basis. So it'll be interesting to see whether a court will see the General Assembly's legislation as creating that public purpose when you meet the threshold of obviously having vacant property, nuisance property. And again, these are also properties in which there must be taxes in arrears, so they're not simply vacant, you know, they kind of cross over both of them. And so I think it's just imperative that we work to make sure we're effectuating whatever you want and whatever HCD needs in terms of actually getting there. Ultimately, it'll be up to the court in any particular case, if they're comfortable using this, and then, you know, to what kind of, you know, process they want. But in terms of approving the bill, as long as that you're meeting the constitutional standard, which is going to be the, basically, the just compensation and the, you know, the stuff that that requires, then we would approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency. So hopefully that made some sense.
Thank you so much, Hillary, for working with us on this. And I, I understand where, you know, the Law Department's coming from. I'm curious, though, what the process is, because we did work hard on this in the General Assembly, and wondering, you know, whether the Law Department was able to look at the bill before we put, we passed it, and how, what's that process look like?
We don't review General Assembly bills for form and legal sufficiency. And in fact, my understanding is a role like mine or the General Counsel Division of the Law Department, it doesn't exist in the General Assembly. And that's probably for two reasons. One is simply the volume of the bills, but in American government, it's the states that hold all the power, right? The federal government reserves for itself certain powers, you know, treaties, coining money, that kind of thing, and leaves everything else to the states. And then when you're in the local level, at least in Maryland, they just peel off parts of that and give it to the locals. So in terms of legal sufficiency for General Assembly bills, they're usually not reviewed, largely because that's the arena to push the envelope, right? That's the arena to try something new, and so they don't, you know, if you ask for general AG review on those bills, there is a unit that will do that. I don't have any idea whether that was asked for by any of the sponsors or whether, you know, it's legal review, so they don't have to share the analysis if they got one. Normally, if it's an, you know, an MOGR-sponsored bill or something, and they want us to look at it in advance, if the city drafted it, then, then perhaps. But again, I mean, you know, not only is my advice just advice, in the General Assembly level, that's, they have the least amount of restrictions of every, of any level of government for kind of pushing that envelope. And, and as our report said, I mean, it's not clear that, this is definitely not preempted on its face. It's definitely not unconstitutional on its face. It's going to be on a case-by-case basis. And I think the best way to secure what you need is to make sure that you're at least meeting those additional, like, fair market value requirements and getting that additional notice in the cases where the value of the property exceeds the lien, because then you're able to say to the court, we've met the constitutional hurdles. But in terms of reviewing, no, I mean, we don't, we don't review General Assembly legislation for form and legal sufficiency.
Got it. Okay. It's something to think about, considering that this inconsistencies between what a bill of mine locally is and the, and what we did in the General Assembly, where I was actually involved, so I'll know better next time to make sure that there is some sort of other review. It's upsetting, but, you know, that's a different issue. And I, so I appreciate you working with us, and I look forward to working with you and DLR and the mayor's office and DHCD on the particular amendments that you were looking for. There were also some technical items that were in the report, but I think those can be addressed fairly quickly. That's not an issue.
No.
So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Department of Finance.
Good evening, councilmembers. This is Gabriel Stuart Seigowitz with the Department of Finance. I'm a legislative analyst. Council Bill 2580 seeks to expand Baltimore City's INREM foreclosure authority to include not only vacant structures but also nuisance properties. Currently, INREM foreclosures only apply to vacant properties whose liens exceed their assessed value, allowing the city to reclaim and redevelop them. The Department of Finance notes, while this bill may help the city address more sources of blight, it raises major fiscal and operational concerns, implementing a new INREM process for nuisance properties that would require significant resources and staff, which have not been budgeted for either in the Circuit Court or DHCD. While INREM 1, as the councilwoman calls it, might be an affordable tool in the toolbox for DHCD, the INREM 2 for nuisance properties would cost significantly more due to the need to compensate the property owner for any remaining value in properties that are foreclosed upon under this bill. In summaries, while the bill's goal of reducing blight is clear, its current form may create financial strain that outweigh its benefits. The Department of Finance therefore recommends deferring to DHCD as the agency that would primarily task with implementation.
Thank you very much. I read in your bill report, I don't have it in front of me, but I'll get it, that you would have added, you would assume that the cost was based on a certain amount of properties based on nuisance and not necessarily based on whether or not they were vacant and abandoned with liens below the value of the property. Really, the report focuses just on the nuisance, and we don't really have a good definition for it, nor are we measuring it. So how, how did the finance department make the assumption that there was like 268 properties, which I think is actually more, but...
That was based on the amount of properties that were, I believe, were last year. We also calculated the rough average of how much DHCD says is per property. That goes through the interim process. The reason why we didn't calculate the amount that we would have to compensate the property owner is that just, that's a bit of an unknowable figure, I guess, because we, while it's not the assessed value that ESTAT has, it's the appraised value. And so without having that data of the appraised value for all of the vacant and abandoned properties, we wouldn't be able to, like, really calculate the difference in the liens.
Right, but I think that the report is focused just on the nuisance part, which is separate and different than the vacant and abandoned properties with the liens below the value of the property. And it sounds like you wanted to try to create a new process, which certainly the end goal is the, to add the valuation and all that would be new, no question, but INREM itself is not, is not new. The processes would be...
Oh, correct, but this is creating essentially a new process in the, in INREM, because it's going to, it needs to get the...
That part will be new, but the whole, whole process itself will be new.
Oh, no, no, correct.
Right. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. DCHD.
One more question, I'm sorry. One more question for finance, I'm sorry.
Okay. One more.
Sorry, one more question for finance. Have you calculated or will you at some point be able to calculate the, the value of the, when we rehab the properties and we actually have tax revenue coming in? I think that'll actually pay for the rest of the program, because we have to make sure that we're investing right now in order to then have a greater outcome. So I might make a requi, we don't have the right data quite yet, but I do want to make sure that we have that analysis of the, you know, what the, what the proposed assess, revenue from rehabbing the properties or putting new houses on vacant lots would be able to do, because I think it would absolutely pay for this program. And my point is that we should invest first and to be able to have the larger outcome later.
We have not made that calculation, again, because we don't know that appraised value is difficult to estimate, and we're, I'm not at least a, have any experience in house appraisal. However, we would be able to definitely see when, in, when the current process of INREM properties, we could definitely do an analysis there. I think we would have to wait until they're all given use and occupancy permits, and then for ESTAT to then rereflect, you know, go through their process to assess them, and that, we could certainly do that.
Yeah, I think, I've asked for similar data from the properties that were rehabbed last year, and I don't have it yet, so I'll re-ask for that, because then we can at least have a general ballpark of what we're doing if we're rehabbing 1,000 properties a year, or that 1,000 roughly are getting use and occupancy permits, you know, how much revenue we could be getting. Now, granted, some of that is going to the TIF revenues, and that's a different issue, not for today, but I do want to understand, you know, because we are trying to grow our city, we're trying to rehab these properties, and eventually, over time, all of this will be able to pay for itself, so, thank you.
No problem. DCHD.
Good evening, Alice Kennedy, Housing Commissioner here. We are here for City Council Bill 25-0080, INREM foreclosure, vacant structures and nuisance properties. DHCD stands by our bill report as unfavorable. At this time, due to a number of, couple of different reasons that, you know, also the Law Department has discussed. Currently, there is a tool in the toolbox that we utilize to, to purchase, actually, and pay for the properties where liens are less than the appraised value, and we do that through our condemnation work for both vacant properties and, as well as vacant lots. We do have a concern, as we've discussed with the bill sponsor before, about the inclusion of nuisance properties for a number of different reasons. We have a very clear definition, a very clear pathway that is held up in court, both District Court as well as Circuit Court, with the vacant building notice and the VBN, that is extremely strong. It is well documented that they, that they acknowledge that as the highest form of code enforcement that we've been able, you know, to get to at that point, and that the property has significant, significant repairs that would be needed in order to obtain the use and occupancy permit and to be able to move forward. So as defined in terms of some of the just nuisance properties, we don't feel that that would also live up to the public purpose component, as we have discussed and discussed recently on that, in terms of actually removing the nuisance property from this. It would be something that we have discussed and would continue to discuss as well. And the valid public purpose comes into play. The condemnation route allows us to very clearly define the public purpose, to very clearly provide the just compensation for a property owner, for the property. A significant number of the properties that we have slated for acquisition are slated to be acquired through condemnation, where we need to have funds available. We've done some of that in terms of calculation and being able to move forward on, on those properties. And, you know, funding for those right now, we have a significant amount that is one of the highest budget line items we have with the state BVRI funds in terms of those, that acquisition component. Also, just compensation, you know, we have the public purpose side from the nuisance property, and then we also have just compensation. As written, as noted by the Law Department, it does not clearly provide for just compensation and can be seen as a taking. And also, making sure that there are ways to contest that in a condemnation case. There is a very clear process that we actually follow from federal law to be able to move forward with condemnation, provide the correct appraisal values and so forth, and be able to move that forward. So, you know, we are concerned in terms of, you know, currently, right now, the bill as written doesn't have any of the ability to have an owner or another interest in the interest holder contest a city's valuation. And at that point as well, when we get into a contesting because of the fact that it is higher, you know, value in the property than the assessed value is, is higher than the liens, not reversed with INREM. Two other concerns is just in terms of timing, that that would then kick it back to almost a condemnation case or how the court would handle it, which would not provide any efficiencies in a process. And also, one of our other concerns that we do have, and we were looking at title insurance, so we have not the title companies, because that's just title companies in Maryland, but one of the biggest things that we have that both condemnation and what we have worked out with INREM OG, is that once the city takes title to that property, that we are, we know that it is a fully insurable property in terms of title insurance, when we go to sell that property to someone to rehab it, to put it back into productive use, and then when they go to resell that property as well. And several of the items in terms of just compensation, public purpose, and other things still need to be addressed also as it relates to the title insurance companies. that insure title from this regard, not just title companies knowing and feeling comfortable with whether or not a lien was discharged in part of the INREM process. So that is where we are at this point. We know that, you know, there'd be some changes if we can get to, you know, a place for just compensation and the nuisance properties as well as ensuring that we have insurable title because we don't want that to become an issue. But we do also know that INREM OG 1.0 has been working well. We've gotten to a clip. We've worked with the court very well in terms of having a system, having an understanding of what properties we're talking about in terms of the liens are much higher, greater than the assessed value in terms of having that value. And, you know, we, as the Law Department stated before, there is also no guarantee what the court itself would do moving forward with, with this in terms of public purpose and just compensation as well, and what that timing would be if they kick it back and then kind of create that. So there is a tool that we use that serves this purpose on both vacant lots and vacant properties that we currently use. And I think at this point, we do not formally in the bill report seek any amendments, but would be open to discussing the amendments as the Law Department, you know, has, has mentioned, but specifically around removal of nuisance properties and then looking at the just compensation piece and also needing to follow up on the title company.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Just as a committee request, because some of the members are new to not only to the council but the committee, can you provide us the process for condemnation and then also your budget item for it? The reason why is because condemnation is far more expensive than INREM. As I think the public in this council should know how much the actual condemnation process will cost, but also outline the actual process so members understand how they meet the constitutional requirements for just compensation so that we can then provide clean titles so that we don't get sued later in life or pay someone else later in life. I just want to make sure that for just the council and the committee to have, because is it educational piece too? Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that's a, that's a good request so that we can sort of look at both and see how that would work. So I have committed to working with the Law Department to address the issues around the just compensation issue as well as a couple of the things that they, they mentioned in their report. So I'm looking forward to that. And if the administration, or at least at DHCD, is, you know, at least amenable to taking a look at the bill, given the amendments, and we'd have to discuss the nuisance part, you know, why not come in with a, with a favorable with amendments to show that, you know, there's, and at least an opportunity to work on this, considering especially since we all went in together two years ago to work with the General Assembly to get authorization to do this.
So I think in terms of our bill report at the time, we had not also yet received, we'd had conversations with the Law Department, but had not received the Law Department bill report to see where they were on where it could fall or where they thought it would be able to fall. And as written, it's an unfavorable report. So I think that is justifiable, given timing and where it is in terms of as the bill is written. And then also knowing that we have the other tool that we do utilize on a fairly consistent basis for lots and properties.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think because we know that INREM works and, you know, we, expanding it would make some sense. And just for the public's edification, we are working on expanding the capacity of the city to create this, to do more cases as well as, as well as the courts. Commissioner, you said that BVRI, the Baltimore Vacants Reinvestment Initiative, is funding, gave money to, to allow for, to pay for compensation given any condemnation, is that right? Okay.
Yes.
So it seems like there are some funding sources out there that we can ask for if we are going to move forward and when we move forward with INREM 2, because that's something that, you know, again, if we can acquire more properties and work together on that, then it's a win-win for the neighborhoods and it's a win-win for, for our city. Again, to protect from, you know, guys that are trying to scam our neighborhoods, but also to be able to do the whole block, the whole block outcomes.
And I just, INREM 2.0 wouldn't necess, is not going to increase the number of properties that we can acquire. We already have, can acquire those properties. So there isn't a net increase, I just want to be clear.
No, I see what you're saying.
There is not a net increase in terms of the number of properties that we acquire to move properties through the pipeline and create whole block outcomes. INREM 2.0 would not increase the number.
Well, the number is fixed in terms of, like, let's assume, you know, the numbers in the chart that I have are correct. There's a couple of data issues which we'll discuss a different, a different time. But yeah, I mean, the ones that are in INREM 2 are also eligible for condemnation. They're also eligible for receivership. They're also eligible for other strategies. There's no question about it. It's not a penitencia, but there's ways to be able to utilize this tool along with those other tools to be able to do this. And condemnation takes longer. And I think with the, Mr. Chair's asking for a comparison, I think it will make, make a difference. But we're just asking for more tools. We're not saying, you know, why anybody would say we don't need the tools. It's all good, we don't need another tool, and yet we have this tool, and then you'll be able to use it, you may not be able to use it. But I think being able to use it in a way that, again, goes for whole block outcomes in a sort of faster way because we've already addressed it through the courts, I think makes a lot of sense.
I think that, I would say a yes and on some of those points in terms of, we also just don't know if this would move faster or not based on valuation and other pieces and how the courts would respond. So I think there's still a lot of unknowns associated with INREM 2.0, even with the amendments and moving forward. Not to say that, you know, another tool in the toolbox, but at the same time, you know, the work that we do have with the court has been very successful on, you know, INREM 1. We also want to make sure that there's a clear understanding moving forward on what 2.0, we wouldn't want 2.0 to negatively impact 1.0 as well with the, you know, starting to question value and valuation and other pieces there. So I just also want to say that while it's, yes, it could be another tool in the toolbox, there's still a significant amount of unknowns with if it would create any efficiencies, if it would be faster, what that would look like, what the timing would be, et cetera.
So, which, for every tool that we've ever developed that I've ever been a part of, there was always those kinds of uncertainties that we just had to try it and see what happens. And that's what we did for INREM, we started to see it work. Assistant Deputy Commissioner Kershner and his team have been doing a great job. So, and we had to figure it out. It took a while to figure it out, as we know. So, I mean, I think that that's true for really any strategy that we, that we address. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I just have a committee request as I'm sitting here and thinking because there's going to potentially be two processes. So I will put another committee request in for not edification, but just curiosity. I would like to see your standard INREM filing in terms of what your attorneys practice across the board in terms of what they file, and then what the proposed changes will look like if you had to implement INREM 2, too, because then we're seeing what the legal standard is for one and potentially the legal standard in the casework for the other so we can pair what the load looks like. Because I know the previous here, we had issues with the, the notice requirement. And I know you guys and the workload of your attorneys is about eight cases a month. So I just want to make sure that like we're being smart with our resources, but also we've standardized since we're two and a half years in. I create this any large law firm, forgive me for my colleagues who do practice all the time. Most of the things in typical filings is copy and paste, fill in the new client and just add in the facts. I just want to make sure that we have at least that process now because we're two and a half years in. So just to put that as a request, Tony. Sid, I'm going to move on to B Sid.
Fabian Dorcias, Legislative Liaison for Baltimore City Office of Information and Technology. We stand by our report. We anticipate utilizing existing systems to implement Council Bill 25-0080, INREM foreclosure, vacant structures and nuisance properties. We don't foresee the need for additional technologies based on this current version of the bill.
Thank you, Department of Real Estate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Jay Hardy, and I'm representing the Department of Real Estate. And as stated in our bill report, this bill does not affect operations within the Department of Real Estate. And with, for that reason, we are going to defer to DHCD. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to go with Circuit Court, Nina.
Mr. Chair, I had let the Circuit Court know that they did not need to be here today, but we can certainly get a report from them. They don't usually take stances on bills. They did review the legislation with me prior to introduction. And so if the, if the chair would like them to do something, you know, whether it's a report or come to the next hearing, we can certainly make that happen.
To clarify, the persons who provide a comment were either the Chief Judge or the magistrate?
It was the magistrate as well as the, a couple of the other clerks that are involved in the, the process, as well as, as the Chief Judge.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, I will open up the questions from our colleagues. Any questions from colleagues? Colleagues, no questions? Okay, well, with that being said, we will recess this here. Oh, you're right, Lord Jesus, I'm ready to go to the next one. No worries. With that being said, we'll move to public testimony. I want to first give opportunity to persons in, in room today. So I'm going to go with Minister, oh, sorry. Minister Flowers, are you here for INREM? Are you here for, for homeless services as well? Karina Flower, Christina Flowers. Are you here for INREM, Ms. Flowers? Well, you signed up for INREM 2, so you want to give comment? Or you, can I skip you? Can I skip you for this one? Because this is about the INREM process, not homeless services. You signed up for public testimony under the INREM bill? So I just want to make sure, do you, yes? Well, go ahead, you have two.
You want me to stay here now?
We're going to get the timer started.
Is it two separate ones?
Two separate ones.
Okay, all right.
Go ahead.
I was interested in both. Good evening all, everyone, partners in the room. You know, if it's to speak on the housing economics, everything with me revolve around the effects of the homeless community and individuals that are lived experience through it. So when I think about our housing, I think about the opportunity and the resources that should also be available equally through all partners in Baltimore City at this time. If it's your strength to be housing individuals, we should be in collaboration and conversations in all districts with all our council people in reference to our unsheltered, unhoused individuals so they could always have a voice in the room because it's really urgent in all administrations that we be able to have conversations about housing and the resources that there is. When it comes to obtaining, you know, the vacant houses, I truly believe it could be more opportunity for grassroots partners to be able to access these houses and be able to house some of our most vulnerable individuals. That's a very important conversation, you know, whether it's in the Housing Department or Homeless Services that we can meet in the meeting, in the middle and have conversations of how partners can work with them to increase the resources. We have over 50 private housing community partners from assisted living to all type of housing that we are able to bring to the table as resources to house individuals at all levels. If it's a vacant house and Ms. Kennedy want to give one up, we can do something with that one, too. But they can all be occupied and utilized for our citizens in Baltimore City. Other than that, what's the next one? We good?
We're good on that.
All right, we good.
Dan Ellis with NHS.
Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. I am Dan Ellis. I am the Chief Executive Officer of Neighborhood Housing Services of Baltimore. I also had the privilege of co-chairing Mayor Scott's Tax Sale Work Group back in 2021, and that is the group that did the work that led to the production of this bill. As a committee, looking at the tax sale system as a whole, we recognize the need to identify solutions for vacant properties that did not exceed, where the liens did not exceed the value, the assessed value of the property. Because we had already put in place the tool, the INREM 1.0 as we've been discussing. But we wanted a tool, there was a need for a tool to address vacant properties with predictable outcomes for those properties, a system that was efficient and that would work in accordance with the law. And so we conceptualized, we had work groups, open work groups, and quite a few people attended. And the, the outcome of that was this proposal to expand INREM and to provide the compensation either through the, through an auction or through an appraisal system, really modeled after either a receivership system if you do an auction, or modeled after an eminent domain type situation. But using the taxes as a tool to get there and using the INREM process, which is a, an efficient process throughout the system. In 2023, the state enabled that partnership, enabled that bill, and I was able to testify in support of that in partnership, working together with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations to secure passage of that bill. The intentional design of this is really about the outcomes for the property. It's about how do we make sure that the community and that, that the holistic strategies can be achieved for the communities that, that we all serve and that we're here to work with. And so this bill is really meant to provide additional tools to support the department, and we want to encourage a favorable report on the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, John Kern with SOS Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. I'm John Kern, I'm with the SOS Fund. I'm Director of Programs. And kind of picking up on where Dan left off, you know, we work with a lot of legacy homeowners in the neighborhoods. And one of the things that got them really excited about OG INREM was that they felt like by issuing 3-1-1 citations against vacant properties where oftentimes they were mowing the lawn and taking care of these vacant buildings just to keep the block cleaned up, that they could be a part of the acquisition process. They really had a voice in it, and I think that's been happening. And it's really just commends to DHCD and to Joe's office for really update, like really responding to those claims and watching for when things became kind of OG eligible. So that's been great on the acquisition side. We're, of course, in favor for any more tools that we can have. On the disposition side, though, I think there's a real interest in transparency around disposition. And oftentimes, I know folks read the Banner article about the New Yorkers who acquired 700 properties and ran crazy appraisal schemes. You know, so it's 700 for the New York folks and 500 for INREM. So we're still behind. Any tools on acquisition, we think are definitely great to try to keep up with that. And really, it's about where Dan left off in terms of having, on the disposition side. I understand that there has to be an auction to get just compensation. That makes sense, but whenever money can be raised where there doesn't need to be an auction and the city can really decide in-house, listening to community, what would happen with the properties, we think would be a lot better. And I'm not an attorney, I'm just sort of a student of Tyler versus Hennepin County and the just compensation question. And I think that actually market value, market, fair market value is much higher than just compensation. So it seems to me that doing an appraisal would fly in the court systems. But that is not a legal opinion. That's just sort of, it seems that that's the tenor of where we're going in terms of just compensation. So favorable report on the bill, keep it up, DHCD and the city. Let's, let's grab as many properties as we can and keep them out of the hands of the crazy New York investors. Okay, great, good to see you all.
Thank you, John. I guess we're going to refer to this as INREM OG moving forward. I'm going to go with Shayna Roth-Gormly.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Shayna Roth-Gormly. I'm an attorney at Community Law Center, resident of the 7th District, a co-chair of the Tax Sale Work Group that's worked on these vacant properties and tax sale issues for many years. I want to echo something John said and Dan said about the, the need for new tools. I think those properties where we see, you know, across the city, neighbors are taking care of the vacancies on their blocks and in their neighborhoods. They're mowing the lawn, they're picking up if there's illegal- on their blocks and in their neighborhoods, they're mowing the lawn, they're picking up if there's illegal dumping. Those are the properties that sometimes are not going to be eligible for In Rem, for OG In Rem because the liens are not stacking up. So you've got the, these assessed values that are not, that are, are still exceeding the assessed, or exceeding the liens. And so we really need tools to address them. And I think that's where this bill comes in. I would love to see as many tools as possible. We know that some of them aren't effective for all properties. Receivership, for example, is not available for vacant lots. So I think, you know, we, we can only benefit from more, more tools like this. And I, yeah, I think that there are, we want to do as much as we can to address these properties while there's still value in the properties, before they become dilapidated and, and really have to be demolished. So I think this is really getting at that, and I would urge a favorable report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Claudia Wilson Randall of Community Development Network.
Good evening, Chairs, members of the committee. Thank you so much for the opportunities to speak this evening. I just want to echo what my colleagues have already said. I also was a part of the Tax Sale Work Group. I do think also, I'm, I'm very excited about the progress that the city has made around vacancies. However, 12,000, we're still only going at 1,000 a year. It's a long time for a 7th grader and for the elderly people that live in this community. And so I just think that we really need to think about how we refine the tools that we have. And I think this In Rem 2 is an attempt at that. I also think, how do we sort of think about, you know, what's coming behind the current system that we have in place with In Rem? So really thinking about how we refine that. I also would like to just speak in favor of the work that the Community Development Network members across the city, the, the members in community-based organizations. I mean, it's great that the city has the tool of condemnation and of eminent domain, but it's not a community process. So I'm really interested in this In Rem 2 because I think that communities get to have a say around that disposition. And I think that's a really important key part of this. And I would just echo the other points that were made by my colleagues, Dan, John, and Shayna. As properties cycle through high liens, you know, we really just need to think about how do we get ahead of this process? And we hope that an additional In Rem tool can be used to address and give the city additional, you know, really refining a tool as opposed to a new tool to address vacancy in the city of Baltimore. And thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Claudia, as always, pointed. And I will tell you, after being on this council for the last couple of months, community should always be present in the forefront of our decision-making. As we took a hard vote on some zoning bills, I just want to remind this council that community should be in the forefront of our minds. That being said, Ari Platt.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Ari Plout, and I'm here on behalf of the Maryland Tax Sale Coalition and Opposition. And I'm also here on behalf of the Greater Baltimore Board of Realtors, only here to monitor for the moment. We may have comments that we will submit later. So I'll be mostly testifying on behalf of the Tax Sale Coalition. We're essentially the investors and the lawyers. We work collaboratively, collaboratively with the city throughout the tax sale process and tax collection. I'll just want to make a few points, I know in, in my limited time. The city holds title to hundreds, if not thousands, of vacant properties acquired through In Rem and tax sales. That remain undeveloped, so we believe that the city is not equipped to expand the In Rem process. Currently, In Rem, we've heard already where the current In Rem process is where liens exceed the property value. We believe is operational. There's already thousands of eligible properties that are still unprocessed. Current tax sale system, the city recovers the taxes, the penalties and the fees. And this bill would give the city the ability to seize properties after six months of delinquency, which would essentially take revenue and cost away that are gained through the tax sale process. So this would essentially transfer calls from delinquent property owners to Baltimore City taxpayers. We also believe that this increases the city's liability because the city would now have increased responsibility over these vacant properties. And I'll just reiterate what DHCD and the Law Department already said. We believe this is unconstitutional. It's a taking, you're essentially foreclosing a property with value. There's no opportunity to contest the city's valuation. I don't want to, you know, elaborate, keep repeating the same concepts over and over, but essentially you, you get the point. So we respectfully oppose the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike Eskenazi.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Mike Eskenazi. I'm a tax sale investor, a licensed real estate agent, and I've been living and working in Baltimore City for the past 11 years. The current tax sale system is an excellent revenue collection tool, historically enabling a 98% collection rate for real property taxes. In recent years, the process has been reformed repeatedly to balance the revenue collection needs with fairness and the interests of homeowners. Beyond just the revenue collection, the current tax sale system has the added benefit of enabling the foreclosure and resale of non-performing viable properties to be put back into productive use and back on the city's tax rolls. The current tax lien system does not, however, adequately address properties that are upside down, where liens exceed the value of the property. For obvious reasons, a private investor will not choose to throw money away buying a lien on a property that will cost them more to foreclose on than what the property is worth. This group of upside-down properties that don't sell at tax sale are where the city should focus its limited resources, including In Rem. It would be wasteful and inefficient to misallocate the city's limited funds and human resources toward prosecuting new In Rem tax sale foreclosures on viable properties that historically redeem 90-plus percent of the time at the expense of focusing on the upside-down properties that languish there because there is no alternative avenue for dealing with them. As a longtime resident in Baltimore City and a real estate professional, I've witnessed the detrimental impact vacant and blighted properties can have on neighboring communities and property values. I hope that the city will keep its focus on the upside-down properties where it can get the most bang for its buck and not waste our precious resources focusing on properties that are adequately handled by the current tax sale system or the other housing tools already in place like receivership, condemnation, or tearing down crumbling properties. I urge you to vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leslie McMillan with Build. Ms. Leslie? Oh, there she is. Perfect.
Good evening, esteemed council persons and city staff and those joining us. Leslie McMillan, a LACO Chair of Build. And Build is a broad-based, nonpartisan coalition of 50 religious congregations and nonprofits across Baltimore City. In 2023, Build joined advocates across the city, including Mayor Scott, to press for legislation in Annapolis to authorize the expansion of In Rem foreclosure. We argued then, and we argue now, that this legislation will be a critical tool to fight and address the vacant and abandoned housing crises in Baltimore City. It does so by expanding the types of properties that the city can acquire. We have been utilizing the whole blocks, whole city. There was a report issued in February of 2023, and it talks about this is a critical tool that the city can use to expand the types of properties. Not only do we want to see our neighborhood leaders driving the redevelopment and the work of redeveloping their neighborhoods, but we also want to see the city have every tool in its toolbox to acquire those properties so that neighborhood leaders can work with the city, the state, their partners in redeveloping their neighborhoods. Now is the time to do this. As we know, the state has increased funding and the city has increased funding in the courts to hear more of these In Rem cases. The city has been using In Rem, In Rem foreclosure, so expanding that would be great, that capacity. There is also $100 million that the city and the state is investing over the next 12 to 18 months in our neighborhoods. We are organizing in neighborhoods and our neighborhood leaders are ready for the investment. We also, thank you very much. Did want to say, we can send you our written testimony if you would like. Just tell us how to do that.
You can send it to Tony Leva. You can send it to Tony Leva from Council Service.
Hand it to you.
If you want to hand it to me, I can take it. Thank you. Next, we'll have Michelle Bass from Build.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Michelle Bass, and I'm a leader of the Build at St. Bernadine's Catholic Church in West Baltimore. I would like to echo Ms. Leslie McMillan's testimony in support of 0080. Baltimore City should expand the REM foreclosure to apply for more properties, including nuisance properties. If I could share my story just for a minute. For the last several years, St. Bernadine's Church, along with homeowners that live within the block of Evanson Village, we, every month, we actually do make changes to the garages and alleys where we actually clean up on a regular basis. And these are homeowners that recently moved into refurbished homes. But they see the drug activity. There have been situations where there have been a couple of bodies found in the garages that have been vacant for several years. And our hope is to create a space that residents of the block and the church would be proud of. You know, but the issue there is that it's, things are getting out of control in the area between Harlem and Mount Holly, where there's a drug market. And folks are just running in and out, and we just, we, we feel for them too because they are dealing with drug activity, being drug users. And we, we want to work closely with the Housing Department to get ownership of the vacant lots. Right now, we do have a lot that is in REM 1.0 where out of the 25 of those lots, they have been under the foreclosure process. But we have seven more that have to be taken care of so the city can go ahead and get those for us too. The Law Department has, we have been working with the Law Department on the, on the lot, but now we have a serious issue with the garages. There are like a bank of seven garages. Oh, so anyway, so there are many more blocks that have to be done in Evanson Village. And the toolbox 2.0 REM would be a great opportunity.
Thank you. Is there any other public testimony in person right now? Has anyone used the raise hand function online to testify? Perfect. Colleagues, are there any last minute comments or questions before I conclude the hearing? I'll go with Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you. I have a quick question for the bill sponsor. The, the definition of a nuisance property, are you working to change that definition?
Thank you very much for that question. So as Shayna talked about, the, the current definite, and I said in my remarks, the current definition is about unoccupied properties that have several unabated violations, but they don't quite make it up to that threshold of getting a vacant building notice. I do have draft legislation that I'm working with DLR on to add to that definition so that we'd be looking at adding to nuisance property that the, the taxes are in arrears, that there's utilities are off, you know, those kinds of things. So we can actually look from a data perspective as to where these properties are and, as well as no mail delivery, which BNIA uses, to really refine what that definition is so that we can take care of the properties like the one in my district where the owner has passed away and the neighbors are taking care of it. But it's something that we need to, to address. Those are our pre-vacants, if you will, and to, to further define that.
I wonder if we can add some sort of, because what, you know, just listening to the testimony and listening to the, uh, listening to the agencies, I wonder if we can add some sort of public health component? There is a quality of life and sanitation issue as it relates to a lot of these properties that we are deeming as nuisance, but don't quite meet the level of, of In Rem. I wonder if there can be some sort of delineation there?
Yeah, we, we actually, I remember, Councilwoman, we had this conversation around the word nuisance a few years ago relative to properties that are, that may or may not be occupied, that are creating a nuisance in the neighborhood. And, and so that, we would have to, the, the, right now, the current definition talks about unabated citations, which sanitation is included, but we can certainly clarify that, yeah.
And so would that be changed at our level or would that be at the state level?
No, we can do it here.
We can do it here?
Yeah, because it's all based on our building code, which we do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I believe Councilman Blanchard had his question, then you next, Councilman Jones.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say, making a comment, that I think this is an incredibly important bill. And I think that a lot of, the reason that we're in the situation we're in now with the vacant housing crisis in the city is that there's a, there's a portion of it that's like, we're not, we've been scared of sort of these like one-off hypothetical-type legal abnormality things. And so we're not bringing all the tools to the table. And this is really a crisis that demands bold action from us as a city. And so, A, I, I think that's how we should be thinking about whatever risk is or is not involved here legally. And for that, I'm a huge supporter of the bill. Also, I'll just briefly say, you know, bringing it specifically to the 11th District, downtown rise, incredibly important effort that the, the mayor's team is, is pushing on. And I'll just note that, you know, downtown is not going to rise without us tackling the vacancy crisis on the west side of downtown. And if you look at like all the vacancies on the west side of downtown, none of them are eligible for In Rem, In Rem 1, but they're eligible for In Rem 2. So just as an important aspect of that, thinking about the health of downtown is part of this conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I forgot to go back to Councilwoman Porter before Councilman Jones. Apologies, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to provide some color and context to the councilmen, so, to the councilmen's remarks. So while it may be an opportunity for us to grab all of the properties, when we're talking about what's happening in the communities, particularly in Black Baltimore, we have to make sure that we are not grabbing all of the, grabbing all of the properties in under-invested communities so that we are not reinvesting in those legacy homeowners and also those Black communities. What, what typically ends up happening with a lot of these investment properties is that you have folks that have the means to secure these properties and, one, renting these properties, pulling up the rent and/or sale of the property so that Black Baltimore cannot stay in those communities. So there, there is, you know, I totally understand and want us to have, use every tool in the toolbox, but there is a, a way to do it and there's a way to preserve Black Baltimore as we are doing it as well. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Porter. I appreciate you for those comments because as someone who represents the red line communities, I'm fearful for my neighbors and the changes in the city because I have private equity buying up vacancies left and right in West Baltimore. I have people who are uninterested. And I will say, I just got a call from someone from New York today because we are pursuing the In Rem case against them, right? These are the conversations that we need to have because at the end of the day, and I'm just going to reiterate this, I represent the Black women in West Baltimore when white people left this city, who held up our tax base. And every day, I'm going to make sure that my neighbors who were left here, who held up the tax base, who dealt with the potholes, who dealt with the failing schools, who dealt with the inner harbor not being a place that welcomed them, who dealt with having to cross streets, or the fact that I have Fulton Street, Fulton Avenue in my district, when my aunts, my grandmother, my grandfather could not cross that street to actually live in the 3,400 block of Gwen's Falls Parkway. And I live in a neighborhood called Ashburn that in 1972, the Baltimore Sun said, "Ashburn from, from Jews to Gentiles to Blacks." I represent the people who generationally went through Jim Crow segregation in this city, who saw disinvestment. I just want to make sure that, as you guys saw from the mission statement of this committee, I will profoundly uphold that voice for those people. And I think that when we talk about In Rem, we got to get this right. I don't want to change title and send it over to someone else and then they did, just refusing and say it's not possible. I don't want us to pay for title insurance and it not actually work. I say that because we are changing as a city. I firmly believe as someone who loves this city and someone who, as we get into homeless services hearing, I was once homeless in the city. I lived in public housing until I was 25. I was once homeless in the city. I lived in public housing until I was twenty-five. There is opportunities for us to lift up our neighbors and to provide access to someone who makes fifteen to twenty dollars an hour, making minimal wage in this city, to live and be housed because it's a right, right? So I just want to make sure that we move into those comments. And I'll go with Councilman Jones and then you, Vice Chair, for closing comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just in my closing comments, just wanted to say, like I look forward to in-rem two being a tool that we can use here in the city. But also recognize that there's work we have to do to kind of home that tool in. Because when we talk about getting property taken away, not taken away, but acquiring people's property, that's a really big responsibility and it's a really big burden when it comes to people's property. And these are, you know, could be folks' property that they invest in, that maybe their only investment, their most prized investment. And when we put laws in place to allow us to have the authority to take that away, it's an authority I don't take lightly and that we really have to home in. Because when we have a tool, if a tool is ever used improperly, damage can really happen. So it's like, how can we home this tool, in-rem two? So that it's only used in the right circumstances that benefit the neighborhoods and the community. I think currently, as we have the conversation, we look at in-rem two potentially being used like in-rem one, but as an option. But it should be used more so in a specific option. And if we can home that language down, I think we now feel like we're not using a sledgehammer to put a nail in the wall. Because I think if you use the wrong tool for the wrong job, you can really create damage. And how can we really put guardrails in place around the legislation to ensure that, you know, it's not used in the wrong way? And that's a conversation I look forward to. But also, as someone new on the council would say, we also, when we take two years to introduce legislation, it's important that we look at it all the way and really figure out whether or not we want to use this tool. Because it was a lot of work done on the state's side to actually make this happen. And I think for us to be in this position now and questioning how we want to use it, whether or not we want to use it, these are conversations we kind of could have had two years ago, but look forward to us having it now. But, but thank you all for all your hard work and look forward to really making sure we home this in so we can have that tool for the right circumstance when we need it.
Thank you, Sarah. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, for holding this hearing and for colleagues to spend time on this discussion. The entire point of in-rem one and in-rem two is to make sure that the city is controlling the outcome of the property. And that means that when we, because right now, the city only owns nine hundred and seventy-one vacant property, vacant structures and about a third of the vacant lots, which means that our investors from New York are going to be grabbing up the properties that we don't own. The tax sale purchasers, who I'm very clear, they know that I'm not a big fan at all, are going to, you know, they'll grab up the liens and then, you know, be able to, you know, sell those properties to whomever is going to give them the highest price, which isn't the greatest outcome for the community. What we're trying to do is get the right tools in place, which I believe in-rem is, both the current and expanded, in order to be able to control the outcome of the property and make sure that the people who get them are, could be future homeowners, could be, and make sure that we're really intentional. And I've been very clear about making sure that all of the work that's being done at VVRC with the money, et cetera, is a whole block solution and to create and to preserve our mixed income communities. That's the whole goal here. And if we don't do that, and if it's just private transactions, the New York guys are going to get the properties and they're going to rehab them with, you know, bad rentals. And it's not going to be good for our communities. So the goal here is to create that opportunity to be able to protect our communities from these investors that are doing the bad stuff to our communities. And that's why we want to do this, do this tool. So I'm grateful for the discussion and I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues on the bill and also with the administration and the Law Department. And again, Mr. Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity to discuss it today.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Wholeheartedly agree with you. This council took a slow turn to our zoning laws last week. So I just want to make sure that things in this committee remain straightforward in terms of how we move in terms of the Black and Brown neighbors that we have in the city. With that being said, I'm going to take a five-minute recess and do homeless services next. Thank you, everyone. Can we be seated, please? Can we be seated, please? We're going to get started. Next, the committee will hear Legislative Oversight twenty-five zero zero one four, homeless services, for the purpose of calling representatives from the mayor's office of homeless services, other city agencies and community partners to report on services and projects in the city aimed to creating permanent supportive housing options for those that experience homelessness and exiting homelessness in the city of Baltimore. This LO was introduced on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, sponsored by Chair Torrent. Here's my comments. I got calls and emails and had conversations with clients of the city of Baltimore's homeless services. I've seen survey results. I have seen pictures and text messages that people have sent me. I am disturbed. And then when asked to hold this hearing and provide information directly, I asked explicit things from homeless services that were not provided. And I'm just going to be frank, I have never in my life thought that I would have to call a deputy mayor, a chief of staff, nor a special assistant to get the answers that I need for basic questions. I say that as a person who has oversight over your agency, the standard has not been met. I received a PowerPoint presentation that had grammatical errors, typeset that was different types, right? These are the basic things in terms of government and professionalism in which we show up. To then have to have an exchange about why data has a fifteen-month period and have no answers, to then ask you through via multiple members of the administration to have the revised slides by a certain time, which were not provided to this committee and now are provided to this committee, is totally not acceptable. You guys were given several weeks to prepare for this hearing. As a person who once was unhoused, I am mortified by just HUN's survey results, but also from talking to residents, and I do things, but in an interesting way. I trust but verify. So I actually talked to some clients outside of some of our shelters. And I ask these questions because I don't take this job lightly. And while I do not agree with Ronald Reagan's actual like policies, I believe with one statement, trust but verify. Residents, and I say residents because our unhoused persons are residents of this city, said they felt that they were not welcomed by staff at our supervised shelters. They felt disrespected. Shelters had mold. I actually had a advocate send me a picture of a woman who gave birth to a stillborn child in one of our shelters. I had a resident who did not feel comfortable in their actual status as a person because of the shelter not allowing them in because of their gender conforming, right? These are real questions that people have to experience. And I say that as a person who sits in a council district that has women and children who are desperately looking for housing. I have encampments in my, in our parks. I have persons who are in the midst of gender confirming surgery, who are now seeking sex work to pay for said surgeries. This is something that we have to think about as a community. But also, what I see is, is a federal investment into our hotels, but I have not seen articulated strategy outside of the goal from homeless services, right? And I say that as someone who was asked this question a time and time again, as someone who has worked in city government at a high level, that you got the money, I want to know how we're going to get there. Case in point, there were residents who were dislocated because of renovations happening for medical facilities at one of our actual centers. These are the conversations I had, just dressed in joggers from Under Armour and sitting outside of our shelters. I want to give an opportunity for our community to give comment, but I also want an opportunity for homeless services to account for the things I'm hearing from residents. Mainly because, two parts. And I wholeheartedly will say this, the agency has come a mighty long way, previous to leadership. And I get that this is a service that requires you to meet people where their humanity allows you to meet them. But what I'm hearing from the people who are our clients who are receiving said services, they're not being seen as who they are or feeling that they're being treated justly. So I'm going to give you some North Stars to this hearing. By the end of this hearing, I'm going to request a commitment from the agency to establish an independent ombudsman or a panel to deal with grievances from our unhoused residents. The reason why is because I want to trust but verify. In this city, we have these processes for grievances and then we just carry it away and say that this thing has been met. We also have a contracts through multiple agencies through the BOE. So I want to make sure that if there is an independent person hired or a panel, that if people are not meeting this, as we move as a city to, and as we're, I've been pushing this administration to, to go from the lowest bids to best value, that if you do not meet that muster, you no longer should receive federal funding or any funding from the city of Baltimore as a person. I just want to be wholehearted about that, but also I'm troubled because I've met with MOH staff who've been let go from your agency. And the things that I hear with internally into the agency make me shudder my eyes because that is not how we meet people. And I say that because I love my city, I love our agencies, my colleagues, and I may disagree on some zoning bills, but my heart is always going to be where is the best value for this city. And I say that because every day that we provide services in the city, we're not going to meet the actual expectation of our residents. But we go through a process where we can redeem ourselves by making sure that the process in which we have not followed can be redeemable in terms of making sure that we cure what we did wrong. So I want to change the tone to, let's acknowledge what we did wrong and let's get to how we can cure this to move and bring the best product for our young people, our seniors, our persons and mothers who are seeking housing as well. With that being said, I will open it up to MOHS to provide their presentation. Followed by, I will allow the housing, our neighbors to provide a presentation from the community members. And then with that, we will then go with committee questions. And then after that, we will open it up for public testimony. With that being said, I turn it over to you, Director.
Thank you very much, Councilman, as well as everyone else that's taken the time out to be here with us tonight. I want to open up by first saying thank you to all of the providers, all of the advocates, my team who is here, who's been doing this work under my leadership for the last two years. I like to think that the city is much better under our leadership than it has been prior to. And as we go through this PowerPoint presentation, we're going to be able to share that. But some of the things that you just stated resonates a little hard for me. I want to recognize that the goal of our agency is, in my opinion, is to serve in excellence. That's it. Anyone that's a part of our staff, anyone that's a part of our providers, the standard is that people deserve to be loved and people deserve to be treated. And there is no compromise to that in our agency. I recognize that both myself, my team, my providers, there's room for all of us to continue to get better. But what I think is important for me to be able to lift up for the people that's doing this work, I'm proud of the work that you all have been doing. It has not been easy work. So as we get through this presentation, we'll get a chance to talk about what we're not doing well, but we are also going to talk about what we are doing well. This team, this agency, the advocates that has been a part of this work for us, with us, our continuum of care, which works tirelessly for free. And they are, they are an independent group that leads us and are part of our work and are part of our journey. And I don't want for a moment for them to think that I don't value their work, that I'm not thinking that y'all have been working as hard as you can possibly work. We're going to do better as a city and I'm going to do better as a leader. The items that you mentioned, my hope is as we go through this PowerPoint presentation, we're able to talk about some of the items that still remains a challenge for us. But it's not unique to Baltimore City. These are challenges that's being faced across the United States. It's not unique to us. There are stories and there are people that we can absolutely serve better. But there are also lots of folks that we're going to talk about today that have come through our system, that they are housed. Year after year, our numbers have increased for who we are exiting from the street into housing. And today, we'll be able to go through that. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to be here today. As I approach two years in this role, it's been a privilege to serve. And as I shared with everyone, my, my goal, no matter where I go, is to be an obedient servant. So the moment that God removes me from this space, I'm okay with God's decision. So I love for us to go through some of the work. I'm grateful for everyone that has taken the time to be here. It is late, which lets me know that this is just in your heart. So thank you so much for being here. Next slide. As everyone knows, our office is split up into a couple of different divisions. We, the coordinated access system, which is really our, how do you get into housing? It's through our coordinated access system, our street outreach teams, our emergency shelters. And we house people. Part of our programs is a housing opportunity for people with AIDS and we have permanent housing programs. I'm joined here by a couple of members of my senior executive leadership team, Deputy Williams, Lakeisha, Sadee. Creighton Wade is our new chief of fiscal services. Nise Sowa is our chief of emergency services. And Althea, who is at a Built for Zero conference at this moment, is our chief of partnership and policy. As I came to this city, people, our agency was challenged. And it was looking like, how were we going to meet the demands that we needed to do? We have restructured our organization and we have chiefs in charge of each of these teams. Next slide. In 2025, I wanted to give a little snapshot. We're not through the year yet. This is data from January first through September thirtieth. We've served sixteen thousand six hundred and forty-nine clients in our programs. That's our supportive services, our shelters, and our housing programs. We've successfully navigated over four thousand people. We've served nearly four thousand people with permanent housing. We've seen one thousand thirty-four clients exit from homelessness into permanent housing. We've served over two thousand clients in our shelters. We've seen three thousand one hundred and eleven unhoused residents on our streets in the city of Baltimore. That's an increase, as we're going to continue to talk about. We've served two hundred and three survivors of domestic violence in our programs, with fifty percent of them exiting to a permanent housing option. We've served eight hundred and three clients in our permanent housing program for HAPLA. What I'll say about those numbers is every year, the number that we have aimed to serve for people exiting the housing has increased every single year. And that's not because of anything other than hard work from providers, commitment to doing this work. We'll talk a lot about this federal landscape that they have been navigating and haven't stopped doing the work for not one second. Next slide. The way that we've been approaching this work is the city, MOHS rather, is responsible for six shelters. We hired a guide house consultant who came in and took a look at our shelters. We wanted to understand what are national standards, how do we measure up, but more importantly, how do we do better? I heard you use the terminology North Star. I hadn't heard that word until this consultant, consulting group. But what is our North Star? Our North Star is always going to be to get people into permanent housing. It's not anything other than how do we house more people and get them into housing. What this consultant group did was they looked at our operational assessments, a facilities review. They looked at all of the policies and procedures across all of our city-funded shelters, as well as MOHS has our standard procedures and written standards for our, our city-funded shelters as well. They gave us some strategic recommendations. So what we did with this consulting group, they worked with us for about four, four to six months. And we did some heavy work. The city-funded shelters are twenty-four seven, ran by community-based organizations. Part of their charge is twenty-four seven operations, but wraparound services and support. Next slide. Twenty twenty-five is a year that I want us to look at the point in time count. Many of you here, I'm sure, have volunteered for the point in time count. What it is, is it's a snapshot into your ecosystem that HUD requires communities to do every year. Twenty twenty-five, we saw two thousand and twenty-four people experiencing homelessness in twenty twenty-four. Some of the key items that I'll lift up for this group is that one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six of them was in shelters, one hundred and eighty-eight of them were not in shelters. Four point three percent of them are under the age of eighteen. Fifty-five and above was thirty-two percent of who we've served. Fifty-five and above was thirty-two percent of who we've served. Some of the items that I I think is is really important to to note is from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty four, the city has consistently seen a decrease in homelessness across the board. Twenty twenty five was the first year that we've seen growth. Not in, and I think in twenty twenty four, around the country, the growth was starting to be seen. You had um the national averages was about eighteen percent increases in twenty twenty four. That was not our reality in twenty twenty four. But then comes twenty twenty five. Twenty twenty five is when our cities started to have the impact of what does it look like when there is not as many eviction prevention programs? What does it look like when rapid rehousing programs are coming to an end, the cost of living is going up, and really, more and more people was asking for support? Some of the positive things that we would say happened is chronic homelessness decreased by three percent. Veterans homeless decreased by two percent. Homelessness for youth ages eighteen to twenty-four decreased by nine percent. Some of the items that are are heavy on my heart is the seniors that we've seen an increase in older adults. Twenty-two percent of those that are in our system are older adults above sixty-five. The other item worth noting is that for first-time homelessness, thirty-seven percent of the clients in emergency shelters said that this is the first time that they've ever had to ask for anybody to for some help in a shelter. Fifty-two percent of those that we've seen on the street, this was also their first time of experiencing street homelessness. We'll have a link in there. We've published a P I T report for twenty twenty five that has a a lot more information. Please go take a look at the website. Next slide. Between July twenty twenty-three and September thirtieth, we housed over three thousand eight hundred clients in our city-funded shelters. What I wanted to be able to talk to this group about is what's happening for people in our shelters. I, one story is one story too many, but I also want to lift up the fact that these providers are being able to exit clients to permanent housing. When you take a look at the blue, the blue is the indicator of did they go into permanent housing? As you can see in most of our city-funded shelters, and I have on glasses, but nevertheless, I still cannot see that well. Um, it's over fifty-five percent in each of our city-funded shelters, with Sarah's Hope having seventy-one percent. The shelter that continues to have a challenge is always going to be W H R C, which is our congregate shelter location. Ultimately, I think part of what you asked about is what is the vision? The the vision for homeless services is to, number one, not have congregate shelters. Um, number two, if I do have to have a congregate shelter, which is W H R C, we need to figure out a way to to not have a hundred and seventy-five people in the same location. The item that we've done so far is we've just built out a wellness center that's at the top of W H R C. We've partnered with a couple of new providers and additional support that's going to help not just at Sarah's Hope, but in all of our city-funded shelters. The Department of Social Services is in all of our shelters, providing entitlement benefits and helping to connect people to not just food stamps and T C A, but also medical assist, medical insurance. The other item that's new in our city-funded shelters is that the Family Investment Unit is going to begin providing workforce development programs in twenty twenty six at each of our locations. Next slide. Part of the the challenge for us is we wanted to show the grievances, and I and I absolutely understand, Councilman, of of the the comment between why did I choose to two twenty-four, twenty-four to seventeen twenty-nine? It was not my choice. We, this slide and this data was what was done by our independent consultant. We did not want to influence their decision in any way, shape, or form. We gave them full access to our documents and all of the grievances, and that was the time period at which they selected as their fifteen-month time period. What we then did was we, I added to the slide. Um, between seven-one twenty twenty-four and six-thirty twenty twenty-five, we've had two hundred and sixty-two grievances. What I will lift up that is a con- consistent theme, no matter what time period I I look at. And it is also consistent with with some of the survey results that I saw from Han today is interpersonal conflicts, forty-two percent for us. Well, that that's not actually consistent with Han, but I'll I'll lift up that forty-two percent of the complaints are interpersonal conflict. What that is for us for us is, is I'm not getting along well with my roommate. Um, and how can I help? So interpersonal conflicts are the conflicts that they're having with the other people that's at the facility. One of the items that we've added to try to help with interpersonal conflicts is not just um not just the normal case management support. We've also asked Monty to come on site at our programs, and they're also acting as mediators. And people that are having some issues and concerns with their roommates, they're able to sign up and get some mediation on site as well. Staff conduct was twenty-nine percent of, uh, people saying that I'm not getting along well with the staff here or those those were the complaints. We've added on some additional trainings that M O H S has has required of our providers, some being trauma-informed training, some being motivational interviewing. So we've, we've been a part of taking a look at that data point and trying to work with our with our shelter providers on how do we just do better? And sometimes in in most of our facilities, you have a security person, you have a security guard you have to walk through. Part of the challenge, and it's not a challenge, it's part of a reality, is that every person that even has to say hello to a client needs the same level of training, even if you're not a the person that's going to provide them case management. You're still the person that they're going to encounter, and as such, we need them to have those tools to be able to have those conversations. Next slide. We took a look at our city-funded shelters. We are compliant with the the fed, the mandate is E S G human habitability standards across the board. Um, it is our, the way that our agency works, um, we have program compliance team who's really our monitoring arm of M O H S. Their charge is to go out, monitor each agency, each program, each contract, once a year at a very minimum. Each of these locations has complied with the state mandate of E S G minimal habitability standards. There are no, I I'll just leave it at that. It's it's E S G minimum habitability standards. You can see from the slide, kind of see from the slide of each of the dates that each of these agencies had their inspection. Um, part of the the other item of our teams is that's the, that's the facility. Um, E S G standards was not designed to to really take a look at the type of facilities that M O H S is now moving into. It's more about congregate setting. We've had to create an additional tool that was going to allow us to look at rooms, which is what our consultant has helped us to do. So it's not just about the physical structure anymore, which is really what the federal government is looking for is does your building meet the standards? We've added some items to that with our with our consultants on just taking a look at the entire facility, because now we we're not congregate shelters across the board. The other item that I cannot see, but I am doing my best is that all of our shelters are required to do surveying of their clients on an annual basis. You can see from the core areas, safety, cleanliness, food services, case management, daily support. Um, and then the last one at the bottom is transportation services. Each of the locations, W H R C had over sixty independent respondents. The women's location, fifty-nine, the men's location, forty-six. The family shelter had six respondents, and the nest had about thirty-eight respondents. From those that were actually in our facility, you'll see that over eighty percent of them were saying that they felt safe in this facility. When it's coming down to cleanliness, you will see that over seventy percent of them felt, and that's the average of it, right? That's the average of it. Seventy-five percent of them are saying that they felt that the facility is clean and et cetera. The item that we would say, I understand that it was a part of Han's survey that that clearly is showing in ours, is food services. Most of the clients, one and two, are saying that they are satisfied with the food. Um, we'll work with our provider on who they contract with to provide su- food services. I E, most of our agencies, they're not cooks, they're contracting with someone else that's coming into the building in order to provide food services. So I will do my, I will work with my providers for how can we do better in terms of food? Case, I apologize. Case management, as you can see, over eighty-five percent of the clients are stating that they are satisfied with the case management services. A key area that we note of concern is that across all of our shelters, our clients are asking for more structured activities on the built-in of facilities. So that's, that's getting into some of the work of the outside providers that we're bringing in in twenty twenty six. Some of them are including workforce development, financial literacy, some training programs. We also have to do a better job at preparing people to exit from the shelter into housing. And some of that does look like financial literacy and budgeting, and how do you manage to pay X, Y, and Z on time? So we are going to be helping our providers to launch some of that. But in addition, M O H S has already partnered with other agencies that's been providing these services in the shelters, and we're just gonna expand on them in twenty twenty six. Next slide. As a result of the work with the independent consultant, they had some recommendations for us. Um, number one was to deploy onsite D S S to all of the city-funded shelters, which is what we've done. The items that I'm gonna lift up is that the recommendations came. Our teams are working with our shelter providers, and also just we're we're doing our part to just try to add on additional services and support. Some of them that I've mentioned is Baltimore City D S S. I talked a little bit about um some of the work as it's related to employment. But uh some of the work is also family preservation. We're asking family preservation to come in, to be a part of our agency, um, to provide families that they that want the additional services with the services. Family preservation is a voluntary service. As such, if clients are declined, they are absolutely able to decline, but we want to provide it for them. Um, and then Turk House, we partnered with Turk House to provide some additional onsite substance abuse services inside our shelters as well. Next slide. Recommendation number two was to standardize policies across all of our emergency shelters. Each provider has their own policies and procedures that they're able to use to run their programs. M O H S and our C O C, we've created standardized expectations for our shelter providers. However, each agency has their own additional policies and procedures. The way I I like to to look at it is that um in twenty twenty four, our continuum of care, we have a Shelter Transformation Committee. That Shelter Transformation Committee did a ton of work on creating policies and procedures that needs to be administered across the board. Some of that looks like case management ratios and services and supports and equal access across the board at each of our shelter locations. So that's a part of what's already implemented in our shelters. Another one that ki- continues to come up is implement a policy to discharge emergency shelter residents who refuse services. I I think that one of the things that you mentioned was meeting people. I I I don't want to quote you, so I'll I'll just make the comment. I firmly believe that we have to do our best to offer the services and the support. It does not mean that when when you hear a person didn't engage in services, it doesn't mean that they don't need services. It means that we have to adjust how we're communicating and what we're offering, but we have to spend enough time with people to understand what does that look like? Next slide. Over the two years that I've been here, I've been clear about sharing HUD systems, performance measures, and where we are as an ecosystem. I'm gonna lift, go through them a little bit. I won't spend a ton of time on them. Um, systems performance measures, one looks at the length of time that people are housed, rather than people are spending in emergency shelter. We've done, in twenty twenty five, we've gotten that number down to a hundred and twenty-six days. I think HUD's expectation or HUD's target is people are spending ninety days in emergency shelter. As you can see, in twenty twenty-two, that was a hundred and eighty days, and we've been consistently going down. We're now at about a hundred and thirty-six days. We're not at HUD's target yet, but I I think that also when you look at our community and you look at the lack of affordable housing, there are factors that's leading to why clients stay in emergency shelter a little bit longer. But I am proud of our community for continuing to work at this, um, continuing to do the work. The next item is the returns to homelessness. This year, we've seen an increase in the returns to homelessness by fourteen percent. Some, in in a year prior, it was twelve percent. I think that a lot of that is attributed to if the the cost of living is high. So if you have exited out of a rapid rehousing program and you've been ki- kind of accustomed to a a large portion of your rent being paid, a lot of those households are returning to homelessness. The item, the other one that I'm I'm gonna talk about is number seven, which is successful placements from street outreach. When we first started looking at this, I think I got here in twenty twenty-three, we were at thirteen percent. This is looking at the successful placement for people leaving the street and going into shelter or housing. We was able to increase that number to nineteen percent. This past year, we was able to increase that number to almost thirty-two percent of clients exiting the street, going into shelter or going into housing. The other item is on the other side of it, of looking at clients that are exiting from permanent housing into permanent housing, exiting from shelter into housing. This year, our shelters have been successful at exiting thirty-one percent of the clients. And I want to make a distinction because this is system-wide data. Earlier in the presentation, I only talked about city-funded shelters. Our numbers for exiting people is 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 at a higher percentage than what the baseline data is for our city. But that's really, I think, largely attributed to we do spend a lot of money on shelters. So I would expect that the city-funded shelters exits to permanent housing is much higher than what our norm is. But across the board, um, we were at thirty-one percent this year. The last number that we'll talk about is housing retention. Basically, if clients are exited to a C O C housing program, do they stay housed? I'm gonna spend quite a bit of time trying to talk about some of our challenges today for our permanent supportive housing program. Ninety-five percent of the clients that are exited to permanent supportive housing, they remain housed. Next slide. Wanted to talk a little bit of HUD Systems analysis of how is Baltimore City during year over year? When you take a look at the total clients served in fiscal year, that's federal fiscal year twenty twenty-three, this is our housing programs. This has nothing to do with our emergency shelters. We served six thousand six hundred and twenty-eight clients in twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-five, we were up to seven thousand three hundred and eight clients that was served in our permanent housing program. We increased the total amount of households that served in our permanent housing programs by over almost four hundred households. That's attributed to community work. That's not, that's attributed to our C O C providers, our H A B C relationships, the relationships with D H C D. We've done a lot of work to partner to create more housing opportunities for people that's experiencing homelessness. And this data is reflective of households that are no longer living on the street. They are stably housed in year over year. And it's not as if the city of Baltimore have received additional funding to do this work. This is the same funding that we received in twenty twenty-three. We're using our funds differently. We're using our funds in a way that is allowing for us to house more people with the same or less resources. Next slide. Part of our our large item is always going, I think when I got here, someone said, what are you trying to do? At the end of the day, I'm trying to create housing. That's really what I'm trying to do. Emergency shelter is a critical component to our homeless response system. People deserve to have a space to stay, but not to live. Emergency services is not designed for people to live in shelter for years. That's not the design of an emergency shelter. When we purchased a fear-filled in, I'm I'm proud of that purchase because it is really our first investment in a non-congregate shelter setting for the city of Baltimore. When we look at the two hotels, those hotels will not be a permanent shelter location. Our goal for that location is to keep it as a non-congregate shelter location. What do we remain in need of at M O H S? We are absolutely in need of a family shelter. We are absolutely in need of a permanent overflow location. Part of what we've shared is who are our increases in homelessness impacting? It's impacting families and it's impacting seniors. That's who we are seeing our largest growth in those experiencing homelessness. At this point, we used our sleep-in, which is a hotel, um, for families. A hotel setting in is not the right setting for families. It's small. If you've ever gone on vacation, imagine you and two children in one room, but some of my families have four or five children. It's not enough space for little people. It's not conducive to a family setting. So as such, we are looking for a family shelter. My hope is that I'm going to find an apartment complex that I can be able to use for our families. Um, but but again, a hotel is not the right setting for families. For a permanent overflow location, I I think I started here in October, which means it was right in the midst of winter shelter. We've been, the city's been using overflow shelters as surplus schools and et cetera for years after years. We we need a permanent location for overflow shelter for a lot of different reasons, but one We we need a permanent location for overflow shelter for a lot of different reasons, but one of them being it's it's highly unsettling for the community. It's highly unsettling for our teams, highly unsettling for the community of when you're trying to figure out which location you can use for overflow year over year. I'll get into that a little bit more as as we go into the slide. Next, next. Overflow location, the the way that I I like to talk about overflow is it's really just about the preservation of life. People die every single year in the cold. Um, Baltimore City is not unique to that. However, every last one of them that um if our goal as a city is when the temperature reaches below thirty-two degrees, we wanna have a safe space for people to go and have a place to sleep. They do not stay. Our nightly capacity in our city-funded shelters is five hundred and sixty-two. That's how many beds I have as a city. Overflow allows for us to say, every single person that calls and do and every single person that our outreach team finds, we are going to make sure you have a place to sleep because it's just too cold outside. Some of our permanent locations, so every year we partner, rather, I I like to say that I beg, but I'm sure might maybe people don't consider it begging, of DGS and Rexton Parks to help me find a surplus school or rec center that that we can be able to use for overflow location. That work does, it begins with an ask. I have an ask, I have a need. We've used the same location for the last five years. Um, but but again, it's it's an ask, right? So as such, sometimes the answer is yes, sometimes the answer is no. Um, over the last five years, we were successful in having the same location. This year, that location was not available to us. We have looked at about three to four additional locations for overflow shelter this year. Last year, we used Lois T. Murray for families, Robert C. Marshall for single adults. This year, we are gonna continue to use Lois T. Murray for families in a new site for for single adults. Some of our primary locations that we've already secured, you'll see it, is McFeds, is WHRC. We do have a facility that we are going to use for overflow shelter this year as well as Lois T. Murray in Edgewood. What I like to consider for the surplus schools and Rexton Park is that those are secondary overflow locations. They are not my primary overflow locations. Last year, we did not begin to use Robert C. Marshall until January, and we used it about thirty-five days. And Lois T. Murray is a family site, and we never had to use that site last year. I think we might have used it one day and then found another location for that family by the end of the night. So part of our community engagement last year is Mocha helps our agency um with the community engagement work. We've toured Edgewood Elementary School with Baltimore City. Um, public school a- and we walked the facility, we've done an assessment. Part of what we're always looking at is, number one, can it be ADA compliant? Can it, how can we make the building safe for not just the clients, but safe for the community? We have to be able to comply with fire egress rules for each of the locations. So although the way that the the rules are a little bit different, and I won't attempt to explain them as it's related to overflow, but you don't have all of the code items that you have if we were trying to use that location permanently. Part of what we're looking at is, is it ADA compliant? Can I staff it? Can my people get heat? A lot of the issues that we've experienced with looking for our locations, a lot of the surplus schools, un- unfortunately, they're destroyed from the moment that it's walked out of. They don't have heat, they don't have boilers. You see a lot of the piping removed. So each site that we've been looking at, that's been a part of what we've been experiencing this year. The way that we staff, I'm sorry, sir.
I just wanna pause here because this is impacting my district. So I've talked to your sister agencies, and from my understanding that planning for surplus shelters did not start until September. So I wanna be very clear before I ask this question on the record, because I'm gonna have an NPIA request for the emails.
Yeah.
I wanna know exactly when did the conversation start with your sister agencies, who was involved? Because when I talk to city schools, you have no safety plan in place for Edgewood Elementary School.
Yeah.
When I talk to the community around Lois T. Murray, they were not informed last year by the mayor's office nor your office about people moving there. And I just wanna make sure that there's a thing that's happening that, and I hate to say this out loud, that you're creating urgency for our clients because there is not planning occurring with forethought in expectation to provide a service. So I just wanna make sure, can you confirm or deny that planning did not start until September? I just wanna make sure on the record, for the public record, did it start in September or not?
No. You start planning for winter shelter well in advance of winter shelter, so.
Can you provide me the date? So I just wanna be clear on the public record. I'm going to ask for every email from your staff and your sister agencies to confirm the date. So I wanna make for the public record that you're very clear that you're gonna give a truthful answer about when the actual planning started.
So Councilman, and I'll I'll say this for you and and anyone else that comes after. I I understand you asking if I'm going to give a truthful answer. But if I'm answering your question, sir, I will never ever be disingenuous in my response. There's no reason for me to to lie to you. So I'm gonna answer your question.
So when we had our conversation a few weeks ago, you said winter shelters from November fifteenth to March fifteenth. As a person who's formerly homeless, it is November first to March thirty-first. That small inconsistency in a conversation with you makes me want to understand, do you actually understand the process and whether those processes took place? So that's why I'm asking for an explicit date and month in which the conversation started, because I'm trusting but verifying your answer.
I think that that's fair, and I I do agree that that's fair. So for the conversations for winter shelter, DGS has been working with me to find a location since I got here, and you can go ahead and reach out to DGS. It's been fifteen months. So it's not September that I've been starting to look for a location. So your question was, when did I start this plan? I started looking for an overflow location when I got here, for a permanent overflow location. The first year, I had Robert C. Marshall, so that that was that. Coming into this year, I sent out an email. I thought I had Robert C. Marshall for this year as well, which is fine, like things happen and I'm not able to use that site. DGS has a hundred percent tried, been trying to find me a location well beyond this season, sir.
So I'm asking this question because I've asked your sister agencies, and I've seen emails, right? I wanna be transparent with you. I just want the explicit month in which you started for this season, not prior season, but this season. Your predecessor lied before me in this council one time. I caught that lie by finding records. I just wanna be transparent with you because I'm very, I don't hide the ball from anybody. I'm gonna ask you a question, and the question is, what day in twenty twenty-five or what month in twenty twenty-five did you begin these conversations with your sister agency with the ask?
I feel as if I might be repeating myself. And so for for me, I'll I'll give, and I'm not gonna name the count the the district, right? But what happened for me in July was I've been using Robert C. Marshall. I was asked to not use Robert C. Marshall this year. That was in July, right? That was in July. So if, so now we're not talking about sister agency. For sister agency, please reach out to DGS and they will be happy to, I can make all of my items available to you for us looking at sites for winter shelter.
So perfect. So Nina, um, I want exactly emails between Director Simmons and her sister agency directors at Wreckin' Parks city schools as well as, who else are we talking about? DGS. From July twenty twenty-five up until last week. I also want the actual records of those conversations. She she volunteered it, so therefore my NPIA request is not about discussions. I just wanna vol- see when the actual discussion started. So for the law department, I'm ma- putting this on the record. I want to see when the conversation started, what the ask was made. I'm not asking about deliberations. I just wanna make sure it was clear.
Yes, sir.
And the reason why I ask is because I've received misinformation or incorrect information from your agency. And I'm being clear because.
That's fine, sir. I understand.
Background on oversight and as a former compliance officer, someone who worked on Capitol Hill, I'm asking an explicit question because I know the answer already. So I wanted a truthful answer on the record to see what was gonna be said.
Perfect.
And then the answer that you give me is inconsistent with the information I was given by other agencies. So I now want to see records that then will then tell me if those agencies were incorrect themselves. So I just wanna make sure that's on the record as well.
Not a problem. And Nina, what I'll provide you with is my points of contact that I was working with at those sister agencies. Sometimes it's not the director that I've been working with, i.e. if he's moved that project over to someone else, his team would be helping me, but not a problem.
Perfect, Nina. Can you extend that to any agency leadership responsible for surplus schools? As well as, I believe you had a meeting with the chief of police for Skid City Schools Police Department, who I actually had a conversation with and said that you have no safety plan for Edgewood? Given the fact that you were allowed and told on the record from him that we had not only a fight in front of Kip because of parking. In addition to that, there's been multiple robberies. I have an open-air drug market that we just got rid of in that area. And given the fact that your slides said that we have a number of people who are facing substances, substance use issues, I think we need to have a safety plan for them. Especially with the access to Narcan as well as um harm reduction as well. So I just wanna make sure that we're clear. While I am not saying no to the shelter, what I am saying is I want an agency that has the forethought and plan to treat people meaningfully so that I don't have to go out there and tell community members that I just found out that you have a meeting on the tenth in my district. Right? Tonight is the first time I've seen the tenth, right?
That date is gonna be changed to the twelfth.
Ma'am, winter shelter starts.
So sir, no, no, so a couple of things that I think I've mentioned is that we have our primary locations for winter sh- if it snow today. I have a facility for all of my clients in order for them to not be outside. My secondary location that I said earlier in this presentation, I did not use last year until January. So I agree. I just got permission to, I'll use Edgewood as an example. I've walked the site with Chief Shorter. He pointed out some items, and DGS has to do work. There's a lot of items that has to be done for that particular site. And I agree, I will not use that building until, number one, it's safe for the the community, it's safe for the clients, and it's safe to be able to be used at this moment in time. It needs some work.
So let me be clear. I want you to use the building because I care about the people who have to sleep on the streets. I don't want someone to freeze and die. What I want is planning that is thought and a process. So Nina, a part of this, I want a standard operating procedure moving forward from MOHS that identifies when they make the ask, how how they're gonna go through that process. And I want council notification prior to two weeks before actual shelter season takes place. And I wanna be clear because what I found in this city from being a former staffer in the mayor's office is that some agencies will wait, and I say this, procrastinate to the last minute, and they need something and push their sister agencies. And from my understanding from sister agencies, this was the last-minute conversation to them.
I'd love to know who you spoke with. Am I able to ask that question?
Oh, I'm happy to have that off the record with you, off this conversation, but I will let you know that I've had conversations with your sister agencies and leadership teams in those agencies. And I've had conversations with my community members who are not opposed to the actual site coming. What we are opposed to is an agency waiting to the last minute to actually carry out that plan. And I just wanna make sure on the record that we're clear.
Yep, not a problem. I wanna go on the record as to stating that this particular school that we're talking about, the moment that that school does not belong in DGS's inventory at this moment in time, right? It's a school that currently is under Baltimore City Public Schools. It's, that process looked a little bit different for us this year. So the moment that I received this as a potential site, and I hear you, right? You you got the email from me of saying this, but I.
It went to Councilman Gray, not me, by the way. Just wanna correct the record.
Perfect. I I notify, it's it's, next slide. Any other questions for me, sir?
Yes, ma'am. So Nina, I just wanna reconfirm, I want a standard operating procedure from MOHS that is approved by the law department as well as the mayor's office moving forward with the process in which we will establish our emergency winter shelters and overflow. The reason why is because I've seen this issue happen. Case in point, I attended a CRC meeting for with, for public edification. Last year, where members of the Northwest CRC were offended because they didn't know that the actual shelter was there. Community members just happenstance we found out. There was promise that community engagement process did not take place. I just want, and I say this wholeheartedly, when we do things, we do it at a I'll put like my grandmother used to say, I demand Nordstrom's customer service. I want you to tell me if I can have the thing and if I can't have the thing, and then just give me the answer and not, and and I and I mean this with my whole heart. Speculating and not answering the question directly is why this escalated, right? And I say that because we need that conversation. I was told September, you now tell me July, right? And then also, to have a conversation with you and to say that winter shelters start on November fifteenth, but they actually start on November first, is troubling because you are the head of an agency, and this is a major function of that agency. To say that, and then to hear from partners on a call that you had yesterday, I believe, that you still said November fifteen to March fifteen, that is still a problem to me, right? And I just, I just wanna say that like, I thank you for your work, but I'm going to hold you accountable for when you make missteps. Next slide.
Next slide. All right, we've talked a- about shelter. We, I wanna talk about what the ultimate goal is to house people. Um, I'm gonna let Kevin and Dan do a little bit of talking about the hotel conversion project. I wanna publicly congratulate them for, number one, just being phenomenal partners as it's related to the creation of permanent supportive housing. This council has asked for an update as it's related to the hotel conversion project, and I will turn it over to them.
Thank you, Director. Uh, Dan McCarthy with Episcopal Housing Corporation. Um, and I just wanna be be brief and and just maybe take us back a a few years. Um, you know, we we, Baltimore has largely been behind the rest of the country in the development of permanent supportive housing. And um really, starting about eight years ago, became a really unprecedented uh uh kind of working relationship between the Department of Housing and the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. Episcopal Housing Corporation developed Sojourner Place at Argyle and then Four Ten Lofts. Uh, and what really kind of allowed us to take the permanent supportive housing development to the next level was when uh the mayor's office of homeless services really became engaged and we had this, the 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 trinity of MOHS, DHCD, and HABC working together. Um, and that resulted in the uh Sojourner Place at Oliver Project that I think Kevin's gonna talk about for a second.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Kevin Lindemuth with Healthcare for the Homeless. Um, I, Healthcare for the Homeless is Maryland's leading provider of integrated health services and supportive housing, serving about eleven thousand different people a year. But we've increasingly realized that the very best way to improve health is to um help people find housing and keep it. Homelessness is fundamentally an affordable housing problem. Um, uh, three years ago, in partnership with Episcopal Housing, uh, we co-developed a seventy-unit apartment building in Oliver called Sojourner Place at Oliver. Um, thirty-five of those apartments are for families and individuals exiting homelessness. Thirty-five are affordable at fifty percent of area median income, so trying to end homelessness uh and prevent homelessness in in the same project. That project is now three years old. Um, we uh took Councilwoman Ramos's advice to find a New York developer that wasn't uh properly using an abandoned building, and we bought back our old clinic at uh One Eleven Park Avenue, and we are about to uh in partnership convert that. Dan?
Yeah, so we bought five buildings from Baltimore City to uh Baltimore Development Corporation and then the building that Kevin just mentioned. And in December, we'll start construction on a forty-two unit building. Twenty-eight of those units will be permanent supportive housing. Um, but uh we continue to build on that, and really, I think what we're really focused on is this next stage, which is Sojourner Place at the Falls, which involves the conversion of the hotels.
And just earlier this month, we received news from the uh Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development that the partnership um involving Healthcare for the Homeless, Episcopal Housing, and Beacon Communities, um assisted by Ernestina Simmons in the city of Baltimore um to develop uh Sojourner at the Falls. um to develop uh Sojourner at the Falls received tax credit funding. So this is a combination of uh nine percent competitive tax credits and four percent tax credits that will result in one hundred and seventeen affordable apartments. Ninety-two of them um permanent supportive housing for people exiting homelessness. This location, as Councilman knows, is about a block and a half from Healthcare for the Homeless's largest clinic. Everyone who resides in housing will have access to comprehensive uh medical and behavioral health services, dental services at Healthcare for the Homeless. And we will also have onsite social workers. Um the tax credits are the first part. We are now about a year away from settling on financing. That's how this, the the cycle will go, just to give you a sense. Um approximately one year from now, when that settlement takes place, it then has a twenty-four month uh construction cycle. This will involve preserving the former Holiday Inn Express, a historic property, an old bank building in Baltimore. Um uh taking down the Sleep Inn um and building a connecting building that will connect right up to the historic property. So combined uh one hundred and seventeen apartments with with onsite services. Um I I just have to say in general, um I have personally been working at Healthcare for the Homeless in a variety of capacities as an outreach worker, an advocate, um a nonprofit administrator for thirty years. I've worked with a lot of directors uh for, with or against a lot of directors of the Office of Homeless Services over those years. And and I must say that I am hard pressed to name one who has been more deeply invested, more effective, um and more um persistent in the face of hardship, uh particularly in this federal environment uh than Director Ernestina Simmons. And uh she has um been a strong believer that housing is the fundamental solution to homelessness and has helped leverage city tools for our organizations uh to really make a more meaningful, long-term difference in Baltimore. And as the slide showed, ninety-five percent retention rate for people in permanent housing. And we hope to build upon that even further.
As I stated earlier, I think that Kevin and Dan, and there's so many developers that's doing this work. I I I point out all the time, it's very expensive to do permanent supportive housing. It's very expensive. And as you as you think about, you you have to be a hundred percent committed. I mean, or glutton for punishment, wanted it to, either way. I'm extremely grateful um to them because at the end of the day, permanent supportive housing is for people that are chronically homeless. I E. to be chronically homeless means that you are have a permanent disabling condition and you have experienced homelessness for over twelve months. So I'm proud of them. I'm proud of all of the different developers that we'll get into that's doing this work. Um be because it honestly, they have many sleepless nights. Some of the other projects that I'm just gonna briefly talk about and mainly because of so many partners that's been involved in them. Um House, Help for America with Restoration Gardens. I love this project. If if you ever get a chance, anyone wants to go and tour it, that project is dedicated to youth that are exiting from out of foster care that wasn't always a project's design. And we've been able to help them to get the the building renovated. And then D S S has been able to fund it for the continued services of it. And the state was able um to assist us because we were poor for a while. And and the state was able to help us to be able to bring that project. I I like to think of that project of how do you bring every single resource that's available to you in one room and you beg? And that is what we did and I saw um just beautiful young people that would be exiting from out of foster care that has a place to call home. So I'm very excited about that project. The other item that was new for us this year is the Housing Plus Program. That that project is simply for people with children. Um we added on fifty permanent housing units for for families so that they can be able to have additional units and households available to them. A project that's going to come online, hopefully in twenty twenty-seven, is going to be a permanent supportive housing slash transitional housing slash um an employment and career center for transitional aged youth by Springboard Community Services. That agency has shown that they are, like many agencies that's doing this work, a hundred percent committed. Their demographic is youth. And so I'm excited for what their training center is going to bring. Next slide. Some of the other developers that's really, that's that understand that how do we do better is recreate more housing is four oh seven Franklin Partners Beacon Homes, which is really gonna be dedicated towards veterans. At the end of the day, this is two hundred and eighty-one affordable housing units with a hundred and twenty-seven of them being permanent supportive housing. I want to thank you, although she is not here, Commissioner Kennedy um and her team has done an excellent job at working with our team on a Housing Accelerator Fund. And you can see some of the units that's going to begin to come online as a result of this project in spring of twenty twenty-six. Next slide. Next slide. Thank you so much. Part of what what I think people, what do I, my my job is broken up into three different components. I serve those that are on the street. I serve those that are in the shelter. I serve those that are housed. Right now, our federal programs have been are under attack. And so part of, I think a year ago, most of you, you saw that the federal government just paused people's payments. They just randomly said, we're gonna, we're gonna stop funding people for the moment and you can't do a draw, a drawing lots. What that meant for my community is I'm getting on the phone and I'm talking to all of my C O C providers, helping them to understand. We are going to press forward. We're gonna find a way to keep you whole and keep people housed. And so for the last year and a half, we've been navigating this federal landscape in in a way that I I have to tell them, thank you that that are listening to this for trusting me because it's been very, very difficult for them to be able to navigate. Some of the projects that we've seen of, one day you're funded and the next day you're not, is the Emergency Housing Voucher Program. That project was was generated about two hundred and fifty-nine vouchers for the city of Baltimore. What happened for that project? People were excited about it. As you're always excited every time you're gonna have a new housing voucher program. We learned that that program was supposed to stay around for people till twenty thirty. We quickly learned that the federal government said, no, no funding for this program as of twenty twenty-six. What that means for M O H S, what that means for H A B C, we're trying to find a way to make sure that those households remain home. So thank you to H A B C um and that team. They're working with our agency on making sure that we can keep all of those households housed. The other program that was highly reliant on federal dollars was Hope Safe Haven. Hope Safe Haven was really our only safe haven for those in the city of Baltimore. That program has had to close its doors as a result of a lack of funding. Our agency is being able to help Hope Safe Haven to transition those clients. But it's important to note of what's happening in our ecosystem. People that are relying in agencies that's relying on federal funding, they're seeing their funding, as we all know, come to a close. M O H S and our partners were doing our part to try to ensure the clients that we know of that's been a part of our ecosystem is remained stably housed, but it is a challenge. Next slide. I have asked Danielle with the state to come and talk a little bit about this item. I'm gonna lift it up for what this means for us, for it, for M O H S. We are the collaborative applicant for the continuum of care. What that means is that our chair, Nico Sanders, is here. He can speak better than I about the role of the continuum of care. Our agency applies on behalf of community. We've received an award of thirty-three million dollars for C O C Federal Fiscal Year twenty twenty-four. Next slide. What the federal government is letting us know is that, uh, we don't believe in permanent supportive housing. As such, if we if we release a competition in twenty twenty-five, the item that we want to do is to cut your program. We want to now say you have eight hundred and fifty-eight people in permanent supportive housing. I want you to have thirty percent of that. So ninety-three percent of the clients that are in our permanent housing programs, that's what we use our award for. It's not used on operating dollars. It's not used, it's used to house people. Ninety-three percent of that is to house people. What we are looking at right now is seven hundred households that we pay subsidy for being at risk of losing their subsidized housing because of this C O C award. Gonna hand it over to Danielle, who can speak a little bit more broadly about the state.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. Danielle Meister. I'm the Assistant Secretary for Homelessness at Maryland D H C D. And work really closely with a lot of the folks up here, but especially Director Simmons as head of Baltimore City. Um and just for context, Baltimore City is super important to me, not just because I live here, but homelessness in Baltimore makes up about half of our statewide numbers. So I try to spend half of my time uh talking with Baltimore City and and trying to understand the needs here. Um I just want to reinforce what Director Simmons is saying and and also talk a little bit about some of the points we heard. What Baltimore's experiencing is not unique. Um these trends we're seeing, where we are seeing some modest declines in chronic homelessness and veteran homelessness and youth homelessness, we're seeing some gains there. They're being completely dwarfed by other broader challenges around affordability and economic conditions. We are seeing increases in homelessness statewide, particularly in urban areas where fair market rents are rising the fastest. There is a direct correlation between housing affordability and homelessness. Studies have shown that for every one hundred dollars increase in fair market rent, homelessness increases nine percent. So one of the challenges we're seeing, and you saw this in Baltimore City's data, but it's statewide, we're seeing really large increases the last two years in families with children who are experiencing homelessness, non-disabled adults, um which is really interesting. That's different than we've seen over the last ten years. Things are changing in terms of who experiences homelessness. Uh and also older adults aged sixty-five and over in particular are really having um significant increases in homelessness. So I just want to lift up that this is not unique to Baltimore. The whole state is experiencing it. The nation is experiencing it and it is really largely tied towards housing affordability and the availability of supportive services to go along with it. Um so as we think about how to solve homelessness, one of the most effective interventions is permanent supportive housing. Um and the city has done an amazing job at investing in permanent supportive housing production over the last several years. But what I'm here to talk about is the federal attempts to undermine that progress. So um to Director Simmons' point, over the summer, we started to hear from HUD. They were supposed to take a year off of recompeting national funds for addressing homelessness through the Continuum of Care Program. In July, we started seeing some signaling from HUD that they were going to not only have another competition, but that they also wanted to see increased investment in transitional housing and in street outreach programs. The challenge with that concept, while we would love to have more of those programs in every community, the challenge is that federal funding is level. So to fund new things, you have to defund current things. Um and right now, when you look at the state of Maryland, which is very similar for Baltimore, it's the same number statewide, we invest about ninety to ninety-five percent of HUD C O C dollars into permanent supportive housing or rapid rehousing. So these new caps that HUD's talking about, they're wanting to put a thirty percent cap on that investment. To do that means a sixty percent cut of what we have right now. Um and to underscore, this is not new assistance for people who are homeless now. This is evicting people. This is taking folks who are in housing in your communities right now and making them homeless again. Um and so we are extremely concerned about this federal change. I won't even get into some of the other, um you know, horrific policy changes they're talking about, which is preconditioning housing on work and treatment participation and erecting tons of barriers to services. Flies in the face of everything we know to be true and right and evidence based in our work. So we won't get into that today. That's a whole story in and of itself. But around these investments, um at the state level, we are advocating, we are working with continuums of care. Um the city has worked with us closely to help us understand impact so that we can escalate that to our congressional delegation. Um there is an opportunity for advocacy, which is one of the reasons I'm literally on a city council hearing tour this month to make sure that local government officials understand what this could mean. Um but our congressional representatives have an opportunity to write language into the federal appropriations bill that would require HUD to automatically renew grants this year. Uh this is something they did during COVID, so it's not the first time. They actually have the template on how to do this. Um and it's to avoid having to do a competition. We are so late in the year. Normally HUD puts this out in July and they close it by October. They have not even announced a competition. We have not seen a no-fo. So in a normal year, we don't get grants from HUD on time. That's gonna be even worse this year. There's a timing issue on top of all of these things. So we want to make sure we're alerting local government officials about what this could mean. Um and there is, you know, when you look statewide, this is a forty-two million dollar cut potentially to permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing that we're going to feel. So the city carries the largest burden of that, being our largest jurisdiction, our largest entity that receives funding from HUD under the C O C program. So we want to make sure that we are planning with our local governments. We are assessing impact. And we're also starting to think about contingency plans. What if HUD does this? They have an immense amount of executive discretion under the law to decide what the funding priorities are. So uh we've, I think Director Simmons has included some links to advocacy alerts by the National Alliance to End Homelessness. As a state, we are asking folks to help us make our voices heard and to protect these funds. Um and if this doesn't happen via the appropriations bill, uh when the federal shutdown ends and HUD comes back to work, we will start to find out exactly how they're gonna roll this out. So um a lot is going to be shifting in the next month. Uh we want to make sure that folks are ready for it. Um and with that, I'll I'll leave it right there, but I will note that um I've shared in the setting before that uh we have had a longstanding relationship with the city. Um I want to echo what Kevin Lindemood shared, which is this is by far our best experience. Um Director Simmons and I talk all the time, trying to navigate problems, find solutions, see how we can pair funding together, how can we braid resources across different systems to be more effective. Um and a lot of the things that you saw here, um particularly around shelter conditions, you know, I don't want to make light of them by far, but they are common in a lot of communities. So you know, statewide, that is something that we're interested in at D H C D. We have proposed legislation twice now to um implement shelter uh regulations for the state. They don't exist. Um so we'll see if that comes back in a future um session. We're not sure if that will happen this year. Um but we want to, you know, just comment that like a lot of these are very common challenges. A lot of communities struggle um with having enough resources to fund shelter the way it deserves to be run. Um but while we're talking about shelter improvement, we also don't want to lose sight of permanent housing. Um and there has to be an exit pathway. The goal of shelter should be short, um but with a permanent housing solution on the other side. Um so just want to thank you for your time and I'm happy to take any questions at the end around federal funding or things that we can expect.
Thank you very much. Next slide. This is, this is really just to to give a graphic for what this would look like for us. We currently have eight hundred and fifty-eight people in permanent supportive housing, a hundred and thirty-two people in rapid rehousing. If there was a cap, that number goes from eight fifty-eight to two fifty-seven. That number goes from one thirty-two to thirty-nine people that are housed. What they're asking for is that this reduction will result in seven hundred people that are currently having a home, not having a home. Our effort and energy in this season is is looking like, how do we all hopefully get on one accord? And how do we keep people housed? Um what this federal government is proposing can, as as you all can imagine, tremendous impact. The last things that I'll, and I'll, I'll turn it over for questions is is in regards to the current hotels that that the center cities inventory that we really do need to stop calling hotels. They are emergency shelters. They are former hotels. Um they are currently being ran by the same people that owned them originally as operators. They are doing our property management and our facilities management. Last year, we attempted to release an R F P to the, rather, we released an R F P to the community that can just do property management. These properties are not managed by by D G S. They are managed through a contractor. Unfortunately, no one bid on on the items to be able to do the facility management at the two hotels. As a result, we had to ask the current owner of it to to please do it for one more year. Um this year, we're we're just aggressively trying to find um a new vendor that's going to manage all of the facilities. I think part of the challenge is when you hear about a shelter, most property management companies are just not used to managing what looks, what used to be a hotel. So we we're gonna do a couple of things a little bit different in the bidding process this year that can hopefully get a little bit more um, a little bit more takers for the solicitation process. The last item, I really want to thank our outreach teams. They, and it, we, and at M O H S, our outreach teams, it's led by Niseo, who is brand new, but apparently knows half of the city at this point in time. Um and Downtown Partnership and people encouraging people. As we're going into the winter shelter season, although my team is is eight people, we make up, we have the other different agencies that provide us with support. But what they do. But what they do during the winter shelter is they are outside at four o'clock and they're staying outside till nine, 10 o'clock at night, trying to get people to come indoors. So we are a small team, they are a small team. However, they are absolutely out there trying to do their best to get people connected to services and housing. So I really want to publicly thank them for that work. Turning it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Director. So I just want to highlight, we had the conversation prior to the hearing started. I want to let you know what you did not answer for my exact questions. I asked for the details in terms of overall maintenance of vendor-run shelters, particularly in relation to concerns of housing our neighbors. You got there, but the step was missed, right? How are we addressing not only the concerns that have been raised? Because I, as someone who serves the city, there's a difference between what our surveys say and then the lived experience of people, right? And for me, I, this is something I'm pushing all our agencies to do. We have to do a 365-degree angle in terms of how we're showing up. I say this because as a person who has three staff people who are working moms, I regularly check in with my staff to see how the work is flowing for them. Because I know the way that if the work is not flowing for them in their private life too, they're going to show up differently for residents in my district. And then some of the complaints I received from residents was, I've had a person who's regularly angry all the time at a certain shelter. I've complained about this person, they're not there, they're not doing anything about it, and it's a staff person of an agency, right? And I ask these questions because it breaks my heart to think that you're telling someone that someone's harming me as a person and as I am showing up. And as the person's with power over that contract, there's not been a change. So I want to ask you tonight on the record, will you commit to looking into looking and getting an ombudsman? Or a panel of people who can do independent grievances with our providers to have actual documented conversations? Because I think when you are doing the work yourselves, you're always going to look out for the bottom line yourself and not the client. So I just want to see if we can get a commitment either from the administration to examine what that cost would look like. I'll even find you the money in the city budget to pay for the position, right?
Yes, sir. So I'm going to, I'm going to answer that question, and I realize that I did not give our COC chair the opportunity to speak because the COC also has committees. And so a lot of the work that MOHS does, it's not MOHS as creating these policies. We have committees. We have an HRS committee, we have a Shelter Transformation Committee. They're made up of people with lived experience, service providers and advocates as a part of these committees who's at the table as we are creating the policies and the procedures. So I want to hand it over to Nico. But what I will say to you, sir, is that part of the hope, and I've spoken with our LEAC and our shelter, our LEAC in particular, our doors are open to our Shelter Transformation Committee. Our doors is open to our LEAC. We've asked, so there's never been a space, at least in my hope, is that I have never had a LEAC, one of the members from our COC come to my office and say, we want to do A, B, and C, and the answer is no. That's never been the case, sir. So I'm going to hand it over to Nico, so he can explain a little bit about the role.
There was an explicit question. I just want to be clear and echo explicit commitment being asked. I'm asking, are you interested in exploring this? Because I, as a councilperson with oversight authority and the power of making sure we can work with the mayor's office to create said position, is willing to find you the salary plus the benefits, plus the retirement offering, everything else, to ensure that there is someone who's accountable for the everyday experience of the people with lived experience. So I just want to make sure, and I hear your chairs here, but I'm asking you as an agency head, are you willing to have someone who's independent of yourself, who's willing to look at people in their eye and actually help them navigate the grievances with our providers or with your agency? Because we have the same thing that we've done for TaxSALE, and that has helped us out drastically with benefiting people in this community, right? That's how we prevented people from actually having to use your services. I just want to make sure that like, the ask is, are you willing to explore? And if you are, I'm willing to meet you there to find said money to pay for a set position or a panel and staff it. So I just want to make sure that I'm offering an olive branch to cure an issue that I see is recurring.
So no one ever declines money, sir. So the answer would be, we will absolutely accept the offer. But, and it's not a but, it's an explanation of, it has to still go through. Part of what you said earlier is that for us, it's important that our Shelter Transformation Committee, who is leading that work and they are a part of that, so I absolutely would welcome, I'm sure they would welcome having a person that they can call as their staff. So the answer is a yes. But I want to also acknowledge that there is a process that, and I want to speak about the grievance process a little bit, sir. The way that the grievances process works is that if a person has a grievance, we ask for them, go ahead and report it to the provider. Part of what was asked was, we have grievance boxes in each of the shelter locations, but part of what the Shelter Transformation Committee asks us to do is also to create a QR code so that people can just virtually scan and be able to file a grievance. That is viewed by MOHS as an independent person that is reviewing the grievances. And their job is to reach out to the person that submitted the grievance and work with the provider on solving whatever this said complaint, any item was. An area for growth that I, that I think that we have to do a lot better in is that what if, what does a panel look like for us as far as it's related to if someone's been banned from a shelter? That's not a process that usually, like I've ran housing programs. If you ban someone or if you kick someone out, it goes to a committee, the committee takes a look at the decision, 100% open to that being an option for our teams. So I'll hand it over to Nico to speak a little bit about the structure of the committees and how they show up in some of this work outside of MOHS. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Director. I do want to say, as the Continuum of Care is an independent body of the Mayor's Office of Homeland Services, that is made up of those with lived experience providers. And we are much interested if that would be the case from the chair, that we would have participation from the Continuum of Care in that policy. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members and partners. My name is Nico Sanders. I serve as the current Chair of Baltimore City's Continuum of Care, which brings it across together providers, advocates, and system working to prevent and end to homelessness in Baltimore. I want to start by recognizing Executive Director Ernestine Simmons, the Mayor's Office of Homeland Services, and the dedicated staff who operate the city's shelters. Having visited these shelters myself and staying in close contact with city-run shelter providers, I have seen firsthand the compassion and commitment of those working on the front lines. They provide safety, stability, and care for people of real crisis. Shelters play a vital and intentional role in our system. They are designed to be a stop along the journey, not final destination. They exist to give people a safe place to regroup, connect with services, and begin moving towards stability. The length of stay policy is an important part of that model and ensures that limited shelter beds remain accessible to others who urgently need them. Every time a person moves successfully from shelter to housing, another individual gains access to that same safety and opportunity. That said, we also know that challenges do arise in the shelter system. Conditions can vary, resources are stretched, and the work is complex. But as Chair of the Continuum of Care, I do want to emphasize that we do not ignore these issues, we address them. The Continuum of Care works closely with MOHS and providers to identify gaps, share data, and collaborate on solutions. Our shared goal is continuous improvement and a shelter system that reflects dignity, equity, and compassion. Ultimately, the solution to homelessness will not be found in expanding shelters. While a family shelter is needed, it must be found in expanding permanent supportive housing. When people have a stable home connected to services, they are far less likely to return to the shelter or street. That is where Baltimore must continue to invest in housing that ends homelessness, not to manage it. Baltimore has the right people and the right partnerships to make this happen. Together with MOHS, the Continuum of Care, this city council, and the community, we can ensure that every shelter stay is truly temporary and that every person has a path to home. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next is another issue that was not addressed, which is safe sleeping. It's near and dear to me because as a parent of two small children and from talking to residents who are actually outside a shelter and from talking to people who are experiencing this, there is a complaint where I received that there was plastic on a mattress that an infant was sleeping on. First and foremost, that is dangerous. It's not breathable for an infant to sleep on it. My question is, it was not addressed in your slideshow. I asked because it was an explicit thing that I had conversations with outside of a shelter with someone, right? And that person did not feel comfortable about the question because having four children, one is an infant, and you're sharing one bed. There was no crib for the small infant child. And Director, I asked for that to be included in there because I wanted to know if the agency had a policy for it. And then also if you cared to put it in the slide. I asked for it, it was not included. It was not even included in your actual talking points. So this is where I provide the roadmap for how the information needed to be presented. I provided the roadmap for the answers that I needed. They were not provided.
To your point, I absolutely acknowledge that I did not put that in my PowerPoint, and I will give you the answer. So part of the process, and I circle back to my shelter providers just to learn the answer, right? Because as everyone knows, these are ran by our shelter providers. Part of their process includes when someone comes into the shelter, they are, they get an intake, number one. That's a part of the process of coming into the shelter. The shelter providers are meeting with the client as the client comes in, and if there is, they offer the bassinet, they offer a playpen, they offer something for the babies to be able to sleep in, in both of the shelter locations. So to answer your question, it is provided at each of the shelter locations as a part of their intake process. There can be instances, I can imagine, if a parent has said declined wanting the item, maybe there's a space challenge. But you're right, you asked me the question. I apologize that I did not mention that. So that is a part of their intake process. It is available at both of the family shelter sites. Bassinet for babies as well as, I believe, packing place. I don't believe that all of both of the shelters have cribs because of the space, but I do know that both of our family shelter providers have the items that's necessary for babies, that they make them available with the intake.
Thank you. Nina, I want to trust but verify. I want to itemize list of each one of the shelters and how many of each equipment that they actually have. And I want to actually work with a meeting with MOHS, spot checking myself with my own visual eyes. Because it is something that's near and dear to me because I've seen that people lost. And I share the story because when I was young and I was in a shelter with my mother, she put her foot against the door so that she can maintain being safe for both me and my sister. So the question was asked because I met with someone outside of a shelter, and that was something that was presented. The other thing that was not addressed tonight, it's the current staffing levels for your outreach team and where they are and the rationale for the high turnover. I had not addressed in the slide, it was not addressed publicly here, it was not even addressed in writing when I actually submitted the email to your staff. Do you have an answer?
Yeah, I mentioned, I mentioned what is my staffing ratio for my outreach teams. We currently have eight people. That's a part of that work. Part of what I talked about earlier was the redesign period of course our agency of hiring chiefs. I now have a chief of emergency services who's now overseeing that, who's overseeing that full team. Part of what we are shifting is, part of my job has been to assess every single layer of our program and our performance to figure out where is it that we can do better and how do we show up differently? The landscape of those that are experiencing homelessness is shifting. My requirements and the items that we're doing as far as an outreach agency, as far as a shelter provider, as far as a permanent supportive housing provider, it is shifting. It is shifting to meet the emergent needs of the community. I have redesigned my teams, and what I'll say to most people is, I'm going to aim to continue to get this right. If I have to go through 10 different staff at one position, I'm going to go through my 10 different staff. At the end of the day, we're not nearly what I know my agency is going to become, but we are absolutely better. And my staff is going to continue to get better. They might have different faces, but at the end of the day, what I remind people all the time, it doesn't matter if I'm sitting in this seat or if someone else is sitting in this seat. What matters is we've promised to serve people, and so as my staff changes, the expectation is for us to figure out how to serve better. So I will continue to have staff changes until we get it right, sir.
Thank you. Nina, I would like to attrition rate for each member, for the staff and the FTEs in that portion of the agency for the last two years. In addition to that, Director, I asked you a question about regular contract monitoring. You provided dates for actually spot checks. What is your policy for ongoing contract monitoring, right?
That was not, I'm sorry to cut you off, sir. I'm sorry. Go ahead, finish it. I'm sorry.
So at a time when I was on the COC for city schools, one of the things that was promised when I was on the COC back in 2017, that there was going to be regular contract monitoring in terms of spot checks on shelters. And it was scheduled, unscheduled, and it was regularly happening. My understanding from talking to some of your staff, it has not been happening. And I just want to know, what is the schedule that you've set for it? Because I am a... Expenses happen, and one of the things that your predecessor was criticized for was not paying attention to contracts and making sure that people were delivering on those contracts. So I've seen improvements, and I'm not going to discount the improvements that have happened at MOHS, right? I am not going to say that your people are not working, I'm not going to say that the provider's not working. What I'm trying to do, and this is politely love you but push you to do more, because there's a conversation that needs to be happening, right? Like, I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and find solutions with you and help people, but I need to know that the bare minimum is taking place in contract monitoring. Providing dates was great, but I asked for like the schedule and how you do it. That was explicitly outlined in all five of my bullet points sent to you via email two weeks ago, and it wasn't addressed tonight.
So for the bullet points, is my program compliance team and how do we work and how do we manage from that lens? So what you have is, part of the question was about ESG, minimum habitability standards, and how do you monitor programs on a period? That is what I provided. The other layer of our team, it is managed by, and we have an emergency services manager who also is almost the liaison between the emergency shelters. Part of that team and part of that role looks like they attend town halls, they walk the shelters, they do the walkthroughs. They also, they also have at a minimum, and I did not put this in there because I was able to put in there, what we contractually do with our program compliance team as it's related to federal and state standards for shelters. What MOHS also does a little bit different for that is our emergency services team goes, visit the shelters, they go at a minimum. We should be going on a quarterly basis at a minimum of going to look at the shelters, doing the room checks, and all of the wonderful things that we talk about. They have a whole checklist. So as we looked at the guide house and the assessments for facility check-ins, I think I attached that as an appendix so that you all are able to see what does a facility check-in look like. That is done by our emergency services team that's outside of the program compliance team on a quarterly basis. We have to get better at that component of the work. But contractually, our program compliance team is responsible for monitoring them on an annual basis. And then the other layer of the work, right, of looking at your expenses and all, and meeting with your providers once a week. Well, once a month, we meet with all of our providers. Once a month, we look at your expenses. There's quarterly reviews for your financials and all of those other items.
That is very helpful. And I would like to set up a meeting and see the documentation based off of what that conversation was. I'm just trust but verifying because I took the word of your predecessor. I said this thing and it was very different, and I've learned in city government, we can become creatures of habit. We may do change, but the culture doesn't always change completely. And while you may be doing the best job you are as an agency head, and I applaud you for the work that you've done, it is always, and this is across the board, and my colleagues will say this, it's always the middle manager is in the middle. it's always the middle managers in the middle that always muck it up and mess up things that then undercut the, the actual goal, the mission and the statement, and then those that we don't pay attention to in terms of contractors, right? I just wanna make sure that they're high quality. I'll give you an example, uh, one of your sister agencies was the Department of, uh, D P W, the Office of Engineering and Construction. At one time was allowing people to put pipes in the ground, but not making sure that the, the coal patching in black neighborhoods was not the grade. Right? And then I asked for the inspector's report. I counted twenty-nine days that an inspector never visited the job site. And one of those sites happened to be in Hampden where I had a gentleman ran over by a steamroller, where we had two city inspectors and three foremen from that actual organization present and someone died. And I, I'm pushing you because I've seen when we get lax in the middle portions of our agencies and someone dies. And I, and, and I may be frustrated with not getting the answers that I wanted, but I'm gonna be frank with you. I love you. We moved this, you moved this agency ahead, but I still have residents I have to be accountable to that are still experiencing things that have not changed. And I just wanna wholeheartedly say I'm willing to work with you to find the resources, the money. It was still the things I've always asked administration, how do we give you general dollars so that if federal dollars get mucked up, I'll put that word because I'm on the public record, get mucked up. How do we hold over so that your providers don't walk away from you because they're not getting paid? Or how do we do things when we have shelters that need emergency maintenance? And we're not just going to emergency, just swipe it on a credit card and figure out where the money's coming from later. So I'm willing to work with you, but I just wanna let you know that like, I'm noticing that the low hanging fruit is still an issue that has not been addressed. And I say low hanging fruit because it undermines every bit of the progress that you make. So with that, I'll open up questions to my colleagues.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, everybody, for staying so late. Um, this is a super important conversation and I know everybody here very much is, uh, cares very much about, um, our, our residents and wanting to support the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services and doing the best that they can. Um, given the situation, right? We've got winter coming and we've got somebody that's about to take away our money. And so, um, Assistant Secretary, I'm really glad that you're here. Thank you for staying li- late for us. Um, but I wanted to get, uh, you touched on a, like, two sources, uh, that are federal sources that are likely to be either capped or disappear. And it, my understanding from looking at the budget is that this agency is actually, this particular agency, the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, is over seventy percent funded by the federal government. Um, and that is, uh, is, we have the same problem with the Health Department, but we're gonna talk about the, this here. I've been thinking about ways to try to address this issue. Um, obviously, uh, the advocacy that you're asking us to do for our federal partners um, is important. They're obviously gonna be fighting really hard. We've gotta get our friends who live in red states to do something as well. Um, that's gonna be very important. Um, but talk to me also, um, Assistant Secretary, about what the state is planning on doing to help particularly Baltimore City, um, because we are, again, like you said, half of the um, of the homeless population is, eh, people experiencing homelessness are here in the city. Um, it would be great to know that because as we think about what we can do locally, I, we wanna make sure that the, the state is also being a part of this process.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to address, you know, what, what might the response look like when it comes to HUD Continuum of Care funding? Um, but also just the broader ecosystem for permanent supportive housing. So I'll start with that because that's a little easier, um, and a little more defined, but this was the, this past year was actually the first time that the state has intentionally created permanent supportive housing to address homelessness. So there's not a track record there. I wanna be open and honest about that. Um, when Secretary Day came in with Governor Moore, that was one of the first things we looked at was how could the state be an engine to create more of that? Um, I'm almost ashamed to admit the city invests more money into permanent supportive housing construction than the state. Um, because it's new. We're, we're just launching. We're just getting it off the ground. So, um, these awards that we just published, um, which in part benefit Baltimore. It's not the only project in Baltimore that got funded, by the way. Um, so of the, um, close to two hundred units that will be targeted towards homelessness, um, a- about half are gonna be in Baltimore City. Um, so we're really excited about that. Um, we anticipate the next round of tax credit funding is gonna come out in the spring most likely. So we'll see what the next round holds, but this is, um, brand new information. Um, part of that is, uh, we've been working to expand the state's Medicaid waiver. Um, obviously, that's a federal program, but it is matched fifty-fifty with state dollars. Um, so one of the things that, um, did really help is Governor Moore allocated funds, so the city did not have to pay for that anymore uh, through hospital funding or through local government funds. So that primarily is housing case management that we pair with P S H uh, or pair with vouchers and other housing opportunities to create more permits for housing. That's been, I think, uh, Director Simmons can correct me, but three hundred units is what we're up to now in the city. Um, and so those are some investments. Um, you know, I, the homeless solutions program right now, which is our main, uh, source of funding for shelter, rapid rehousing, transitional housing statewide is fifteen million dollars. Um, so you can imagine, um, that doesn't go very far across twenty-four counties, right? So, um, you know, when we get to session, you, obviously, the governor and the General Assembly will figure out what the budget looks like. Um, but in this interim, so how all this fits together, um, this HUD C O C, uh, program issue is a, a timing issue in part um, because the state cannot allocate additional funds without an additional budget being passed. So, um, you know, we don't know yet if there will be a special session called. We don't know yet um, if there will be other kinds of interventions. I'd say we're in a monitoring phase. We really wanna see what happens with the, the congressional action and whether that's something they can do through the appropriations bill that buys us a year. Um, but there is a longer term plan needed, um, because we don't anticipate this will be the only time HUD tries to do this. So even if Congress can help us buy a year, we're gonna be back at square one in July, uh, and, and fighting for the same thing. So, um, there's a lot of work needed and, you know, this is all new information, so we don't have a response plan just yet. We're talking with local partners. Um, but I think we're, um, critically aware that, you know, finding forty-two million dollars in the state's budget in this current climate is really difficult. Um, and that's what the, the statewide impact would be. So, um, on E H Vs, um, every community is struggling with that, the emergency housing vouchers, including us. We have emergency housing vouchers as well at D H C D. Um, statewide, there's six hundred and sixty-three households that are at risk. Um, and so we're looking at how can we leverage the state's, um, statewide rental voucher program, which H A B C receives funding through. Um, so that's a way to potentially rehouse, um, move clients off into a different level of assistance. It's a time limited, it only lasts five years by statute. So we're just trying to be creative with the resources we have, but also start to talk about, you know, how do we advocate for more local government funding? Um, and, and to the city's credit, uh, most rural communities I work with have zero budget for homeless services. So the city is actually doing a lot in this area, um, you know, compared to other communities. Um, but I think what this means is, you know, across the state, we've been very, very federally reliant. So, um, to compensate for potential losses, we really have to look at state, local government, and how are we leveraging philanthropy more strategically, so.
Well, the philanthropic pie is very invested in our city. It's just that it's one pie. It doesn't grow either.
And that's true. And I will say, you are not alone. Every, every community is, is very federally focused. I'd say the exception is Montgomery County. They have a locally funded homeless voucher program. Um, they have a lot of resources, obviously. You know, the economic conditions are a little different down there. Poverty rates are different down there.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, you know, I'd say that's a, an example of a community where they're putting a lot more local dollars into homelessness than they're getting back federally. Um, but the vast majority of other communities are all very reliant on federal funds.
Yeah, I mean, I know that we've had conversations around, um, the fact that we do have our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, um, that is, uh, flexible funding. We designed it that way. Um, still needs more money, so we're gonna have to figure that out, but, um, certainly we wanna try to, to brainstorm. And I'm familiar with the, uh, with the Medicaid waiver, obviously, since we do match, uh, the Medicaid match that, or the Medicaid, that's what it's called. Um, that we have a little bit more flexibility there, uh, and to, to utilize that. But I think we're, I'm just really concerned about this. And so I'm hopeful that we can work together on, um, figuring things out both locally and statewide. But again, you know, we, eh, like you said, we have the half of the, um, population, but also we've gotta work, we're working on all other things too, like trying to prevent, you know, evictions and because we're seeing the increases really on that. Um, and, uh, I have a bill I'm working on with D A C D about that. But I think that we, we've gotta just figure out, um, you know, be a lot more creative about the funding, um, because I, I just don't see an end to this problem, um, in terms of the, the funding side. But we very much care about our neighbors. Um, we, I do, I get calls a lot to try to get folks, um, assistance. Um, and that's, that's important. Um, Director, can you tell me a little bit about, um, the relationship between, uh, MOHS and also H A B C? Um, wh- I know H A B C has actually been going through a lot of transition and it's been, um, a really frustrating experience for a lot of folks because their vouchers are, um, at risk of expiring. There's, um, a lot of other, uh, challenges there. Are you, um, able to help navigate those kinds of situations?
Yeah, I, I think for MOHS, our relationship with H A B C has been a phenomenal relationship for our office. So not only do we have, we, we have over two hundred and fifty project-based vouchers, and so what that means is we, we have set a size, we have, they have programs that's dedicated to people that's experiencing homelessness. But a lot of our units that becomes available through our coordinated access system that are H A B C units, our two teams meet on a weekly basis. And so we're able to talk about the clients that are in my system that's also been housed, and we, we essentially do case conferencing with H A B C every single week just to help that process between our two agencies move a little bit more seamless for, for our clients. Um, so, so I think that as things shift for me and as I can think about the E H V clients, those were my clients, like, those are my households. So working with H A B C on making sure that my households remain whole just kinda speaks to what that relationship looks like for MOHS. It's a strong partnership, um. And if she's watching this, she bails me out at least twenty times a week, so I'm just very grateful to Janet and her team because they work very well with my coordinated access team.
Uh, that, that's good. We've, um, had some challenges with getting, uh, inspectors out to inspect units in a timely fashion, which then leads to people having to leave their old unit, be homeless for a little while and go. Um, so that's something that I'll address with them as well, um, uh, at, at some point. But I, I'm glad that you have that relationship with them, um, and, and some of the other providers, uh, as, as well. I'm, I'm super glad that there's another hotel that is now a shelter also. I was worried about that we were gonna, you know, have permanent supportive, which was great and amazing and awesome, but we still needed this non-conjugate shelter piece. Um, and that, so I'm, I'm glad that that, uh, that did occur. Um, so I, I appreciate your work on it. This is a, this is very, very tough and it's about to get really tougher. And, um, so, I mean, my, my colleague has been a little tough because we really care about what happens to our residents, um, and with our residents. And, uh, wanna make sure that everybody gets the services that they deserve, um, wherever they, wherever they are. Uh, and so I wanna just, yeah, thank you again for your, for your help. And, um, you know, we, we need to solve this funding problem together. So like I said, I'm happy to get in the weeds and start to brainstorm with the Mayor's Office and, and other, I have some ideas. Um, to, to, uh, to figure this out both locally and, um, at the, at the state level. And not like in two months. We've gotta start doing this like yesterday. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, first, I just wanna say thank you all for the work you do and, um, you know, helping to make Baltimore better. Uh, my first question is regarding permanent supportive housing. Just kinda tracking that, um, I know it's meant to, if someone's in a shelter, the way you really eradicate homelessness is by providing permanent supportive housing. And I love the fact you all are stepping into that space and looking at it rather than looking at how do we just continue to provide shelters over and over and over, but how do we really end homelessness? So once someone is in permanent supportive housing, as you say, that opens up a slot for someone in a shelter or somewhere else. But what's the kinda end game goal from permanent supportive housing?
Yes, I, so the continuum starts on the shelter side. So you, you come into the shelter, the hope is that you can get into permanent housing. Some of that means you can get into a permanent supportive housing program. Some of it means you can move out of the shelter. You can get a rental, get, move in with family. So the continuum starts with the shelter. A lot of people want to move into permanent supportive housing because permanent supportive housing is a permanent subsidy. The design of those programs is that you are in them for as long as you need to be. You pay thirty percent of your income. If you don't have any income, you don't pay any rent. So in our continuum, that is the end of the continuum. And, and so what, what it also is, is jokingly with them is that you still provide services and a support that people need in permanent supportive housing, because that's ultimately how they stay housed. So you can have some programs that, um, if you exit to a fair market rent unit and maybe you can afford your rent, but you have some, you're dealing with health issues, you're dealing with some mental health issues, and if you don't have the support, um, ultimately, we see some of them returned back to our shelter. So the permanent supportive housing is our end game, sir.
It's kinda end game. Okay, thank you. And I just think when it comes to homelessness, I always look at it, it's not just your job on tackling it. I think it's a, it's a job that we all should wrap our arms around and figure out how do we support in this space. Um, so and I, I recognize that often when someone thinks of homelessness, um, their first thought is someone who, you know, they might see outside and living, but no, there's people who like go to work unfortunately every day and, and, and experiencing homelessness. And children who are going to school and experience homelessness. And often I think that's not what people think about when people think about homelessness. And I think I would be interested in working with you all on, on recognizing those folks who are on the cusp, you know, of, of, of homelessness and like, you know, or, or, or are experiencing it, but just on a bad times because they can't afford it and like, how can we get that number down? You know, as a city in creating policies and structures so that people are making a decent wage and our people are able to like afford a home and not have to choose between childcare and, you know, putting food on a table and like, like, what does that cusp look like? Because while looking at your numbers, um, and you are supporting more people every year and you're providing housing for people every year, that, that's actually a step forward as an, as an agency and department and something to celebrate. But I think it's also a failure as us as a city. You know, and, and, and I wanna, and, eh, and I wanna see that number go down because less people need it, not because you all are out here working harder. So I, I just would like for you all to be in the forefront of a lot of the conversations that we have about how the policies we creating will, will help get this number down and help. You know, every, all the work we do should be looked through the lens of your office. Um, since we talked about wages and benefits and worker security and worker protection and how that helps get this number down, because it's just not about, we're not gonna finance our way out of this. Like, like, you're not gonna have a budget big enough to take care of it if we aren't creating policies in place as a city. So I just wanna say in my life, I look forward to your office being part of the work, especially as a workforce and labor chair and all the work that we do to understand how do we provide jobs, opportunity and support for folks. So at least the ones that, that just need that extra level of support and go out, we, we can help those and then that'll give us a larger bandwidth to focus on the ones who need even more additional help.
I think you're speaking to my heart because at the end of the day, when you hear about permanent supportive housing and people exiting the shelter and I shared how many people are in coordinated access, coordinated access is going to house our most chronic. Meaning you've been homeless for over a year, you have a permanent disability. We have people that's in our shelters for the first time that's never going to get a permanent supportive housing voucher. It's, it's not gonna happen. That's not how our system is designed. And so our office, our community, we have to do better at figuring out what are some programs that we can design, that we can create for people that this is your first time being homeless. Most of our federal programs, they're all dedicated to chronically homeless individuals. I E., I'm waiting for you to have this experience for a very long time before I can refer you. So as we move forward, we, we do have to figure out how to get people out of the shelters a little bit faster. How do we capture some of the people that this is your first time experiencing homelessness? But what led to your homelessness is you couldn't afford to pay the rent. And how can I perhaps provide you with a few months of assistance as you are working and trying to do the things that you need to do? But we, we can't continue to wait for permanent support- But we, we can't continue to wait for permanent supportive housing for the thousands of people that comes through the shelter on an annual basis because to your point, that's not going to happen. So we have to figure this out a little bit differently. So thank you.
No, no, thank you for your testimony. Thank you as well. Thank you all for all the work you do. I mean, I just think about, you know, like our cities, states minimum wage fifteen dollars, like people can't afford to live off that. Like, how do we have these laws that are in place and policies that are in place that just don't make sense and we're just asking people to figure it out? And then you wonder why people are homeless. I mean, you know, experience. Thank you.
Appreciate you, Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first and foremost, I want to commend you on, you know, your efforts. I know it's been only two years, but you and I had, you know, multiple conversations and I've seen, you know, you show up in my community to try to address the issues that we have. But I also know that the homeless situation and also the addiction situation that we have is a byproduct of a bigger symptom, right? So I think the only concern that I have is kind of sort of you mentioned in your, the conversation early on, on you getting new staff, right? And a lot, that's a lot of turnover because you want to make sure you have the right staff in place. And to that point, you know, with my office, many a times we have reached out, you know, to the office. And there's been some dates that were scheduled to like come out and kind of see what we see, feel what we feel and understand in the way we do. And those dates weren't met, right? And I don't know if because there's been a change in staff and no one like took over after that and if it just sent us an email, but to commit to a date and then, you know, the date prior to cancel the date and not follow up with the new date is timatic to us because of the fact that like Councilman said early on, you know, we're all in it together, you know, you can't do it by yourself, right? It's going to take us holistically wrapping our arms around our communities. And, you know, when it comes to the council people, we're like, we're the rebel meets the road, right? Everybody's going to reach out to us. We're like the, the first, we've built those relationships with those individuals in the community. But I think that is very, very, very important, like Montgomery Park in my community, which, you know, many know about, you know, we're, we're dealing with a drug epidemic that's like unheard of. I mean, like almost every three days, you know, I have D P W coming out to do cleanups. And not just D P W, like the community associations, the, the neighbors in that community, my office, you know, we're out there almost three days a week to clean up what we see, the needles and things of that nature. And we're, we're not giving them the housing that I know they deserve, but the agencies that are not there to help participate in what it is that we're trying to push. And what we're trying to push is to make sure that these services are met, you know, for helping these homeless individuals that are also addicts, you know, get the recovery and the help and the shelter that they do need. But also just committing to us as agencies working together to serve the issues that are plaguing, you know, many communities in Baltimore City. So again, I, you know, two ways I want to applaud you for the work that you are doing and what you're trying to, to do, but also to make sure that not just me, but other of my colleagues that kind of, you know, understand and feel the same sentiments that I feel and that I've witnessed, to make sure that these individuals are getting the services that they, you know, that they need. And whatever sister partners that we have to make sure that we're strengthening them as well, to give them the support that they need. Because again, that's the only way we're going to get our child back in Baltimore is us working together holistically to change trajectory of our city. So to that point, I'll just, I'll sit back and just listen.
Thank you, sir. First, I, I think number one, if, when our team promises to show up, we should show up. So please let me know of, of when that happened and, and we'll do better. Part of, not, not part of the challenge, the item is that my outreach team is eight at, at capacity, right? And so part of that being at eight is we work from eight to four thirty, eight to four o'clock. And sometimes I am overextending my team to, to other agencies or to other blitzes and other items that is important. But part of what their job is to do is to also go to spaces that they know people are experiencing homelessness and living and providing them with services and support. So my team is small, but that is no excuse for us to not show up when we say we're going to show up. So I can, I can certainly make sure we do that much better. So thank you.
I'll forward you some, you know, some emails that were shared with us, but just so you can kind of see exactly what it is I'm coming from.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I also experienced a similar situation, so that's why I started forwarding them directly to you. Because the person I used to forward to, I got a no longer works for the city of Baltimore email and no one told us that this person don't work there no more. And then also the agency's outreach email has changed twice. It went from M O H S outreach team to outreach@baltimorecity.gov, just homelessness, homeless outreach. We've had multiple emails that don't, and, and I'm just being transparent, right? This is what I talk about, that low hanging fruit that can easily cause people to be disenchanted or not trust the system, right? There are literally people who are homeless who don't, who choose to be homeless because they don't trust the system will meet them where they are, right? That is a, that is something I, I always hone in on because not everyone's going to ask for help, right? And then I literally, and I thank your team for this, because I had a gentleman who was homeless on purpose, who lived in Roosevelt Park because he was afraid that no one would see him when he overdosed. And it took me and your team going twice to talk to him and his brother. We, I found somebody to wash their dog, we got them into supportive housing with your team because one of them had a mental health issue. We also got another person in rehab from just that visit. So I know the level of difficulty that you guys are, are experiencing, but I wholeheartedly just want to express this and say this publicly. I thank you for your work, but there's more that we can do. And I'm just being transparent. I think the hardest part from sitting on this council for the last five years is that people have to have those publicly hard conversations to say that we see you, we need this thing to change. Because ultimately, we are the vessels of the people that we serve, all forty-three-thousand four hundred and six people that I serve in central west Baltimore and east Baltimore now. I have to think about that. I think about the gentleman that your team helped us with getting out of Drew Hill Park next to the Oscar Renda project who had a tent there. Or the gentleman and his wife who untimely died because of an overdose right there off of Gwens Falls Parkway. That was a lot of follow-up and support from my, my team as well as your team. And here's the rubber. The rubber is that, and this is for Nina, I want to have a discussion about how we can move forward with additional funding for M O H S as we approach the F Y twenty-seven budget cycle. The reason why is because these things cost, your outreach team is small. That's why I asked for the staffing level. It was not a got to question. It was a how can I help you question? And not having that answer, that question answered, can, I can't help you if I don't have the answer. And I'm just being transparent with you. So I would like to know, what would be the appropriate staffing for that outreach team? The cost for the additional F T Es and how much that would cost in terms of how we can leverage them? The reason why is because I'm firmly scared that we, we're going to have a housing crisis eventually soon because of what our friends at the federal government are doing. On top of that, Nina, I really want to talk about a potentially a reserve fund for homeless services with general dollars to hold over just in case those federal funds do disappear and we need to pay vendors or as I say, our providers to maintain those services so that we're not scared. So Dr. Director Simmons, this was a hard push for you, but this is also a supportive hard push too. Because now I'm leaving this meeting with deliverables for yourself and deliverables for me because that is my job to move forward and represent the people of the city, whether they can vote for me because they don't have an address or not. I want to make sure that they're serviced. With that being said, colleagues, any other questions for M O H S? None. I would like to invite a representative from the Housing Our Neighbors up first to, to give us understanding of their data and their survey. After that, we will open it up for public testimony. And I am sorry that we are all here this late, but this is an important topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Cabrera. I am here as a member of Housing Our Neighbors and resident of District fourteen. Housing Our Neighbors is a, as you've heard, is a member organization currently homeless Baltimoreans and allies fighting for a Baltimore where housing is a human right for all of us. Over the last several months, as part of our Safe Shelters Now campaign, HUN's outreach team has canvassed the Baltimore community to connect with shelter residents and surveyed them about their experiences in our shelters. Seventy-four currently homeless Baltimoreans responded to the survey over the course of the last several months. We asked survey respondents to pick one shelter that they had stayed at and to rate their overall experience as well as several more specific factors on a scale of one to ten, with ten representing the best possible conditions and one the worst. For more information about the shelter-specific ratings and for full survey shelter results, you can find that on our website, which is hun.baltimore.org. The overall, the average rate of overall satisfaction with shelter conditions was reported by respondents as a five point one, which is a failing grade. Moreover, a third of residents rated their overall satisfaction with shelter conditions at a three or lower. I'll take some time now to look at some of the categories, which were food, facilities and cleanliness, staff supportiveness, and the grievance process. Food got a rating of four point eight out of ten, with almost half of the respondents rating the food a three or less. Folks told us about food that was moldy or undercooked, sometimes cross-contaminated with known allergens. Shelters that receive money from the city, hot emergency shelter grant funds or state Maryland homeless solutions program funds are legally required to have safe and sanitary food storage facilities, but clearly that isn't being enforced widely. Facilities got a rating of five point seven out of ten, with also about a third rating the facilities at a three or less. Cleanliness got a similar rating of five point five out of ten, again, without about a third rating that at a three or below. We heard from residents about bathrooms that are often dirty and poorly equipped. Often there is no toilet paper, no hot water, or even brown water coming out of faucets and showers. Towels and linens are often moldy or mildewy, and we know that bedbugs and cockroaches are a recurring issue in shelters. We hear often about water leaks and mold from our members. Similarly, to regulations around food quality, H U D E S G funds require facilities have, quote, "clean, water-free of contamination" and that they, quote, "be maintained in a sanitary condition." But we've heard from several of our neighbors and members who stayed in city-funded shelters that these issues exist in those shelters with little oversight. If shelter residents have a complaint about their experiences, shelters that receive funds from the city are required to have a grievance process, as we've heard, for shelter residents to voice their concerns. Our survey respondents gave the grievance process a four point three out of ten on average, and that fifty-four percent of respondents were not aware of the grievance process at all. Survey respondents rated staff supportiveness of five point seven out of ten on average, while some shelter residents did report positive experiences with shelter staff. The data and folks' experiences suggest that while some shelter workers genuinely care about residents, there is an overall impression of indifference. We have heard that shelter staff pick favorites, give preferential treatment to some folks over others, harass residents, discriminate based on race, language spoken, or gender identity, and sometimes have conflicts with residents that can lead to physical altercations and terminations from shelter. Survey respondents and our members at large also speak about the need for more extensive trauma-informed trainings for all shelter staff and for accountability. Furthermore, folks that stayed in shelters that exist wholly outside of the systems, i.e. the ones that don't receive city funds or interact with M O H S at all, do not have any accountability mechanisms outside of making a three-one-one complaint for code enforcement. That's why last legislative session in Annapolis, HUN worked with the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, who would advocate for a shelter, a statewide shelter licensing bill that would regulate those shelters and hold them accountable, similar to how city-funded shelters are. We'd love to see that legislation reintroduced this legislative session. Our members and neighbors are not livestock to be herded in and out of shelters without a word of complaint. They are human beings and deserve housing that ensures their safety and uplifts their dignity and humanity. We want shelters to be a place where our friends and neighbors get the assistance they need and the connections to the housing that is their human right. All of this, but especially the complaints about the grievance process and staff, or shelter staff treatment, do not instill confidence that shelters are going to be able to equitably enforce a proposed ninety-day shelter stay limit rule currently being considered by M O H S and the C O C and the exemptions that that proposed rule calls for. We also have concerns about, we have concerns about this, yeah. Almost half of the residents we surveyed were not aware of the grievance shelter, the grievance process in their shelter. We've also heard from our members about never hearing any follow-up about the grievances they make. Issues about food quality and bedbugs don't always reach M O H S through the grievance process on a normal day, and people are often terrified to make complaints out of fear of retaliation. We have questions about how we expect M O H S to hear grievances about the ninety-day rule not being enforced equitably or fairly, or if it's being used as a tool to harass and threaten shelter residents. Are we willing to play with the literal roofs over our neighbors' heads? Are we willing to make more of our neighbor's street homeless at a time when, as you heard today, the Trump administration is not only reportedly planning to cut millions of dollars in permanent supportive housing funds in the next C O C NOFO, but also threatening to send in the National Guard and federal law enforcement agencies into our city? Do we want to put more of our neighbors at risk of being criminalized simply for being on the street? We all agree that getting folks into safe, sanitary, affordable, holistic, supportive housing as quickly as possible should be a priority of homeless shelters. The reality is that the systems created by most providers are not built to house someone quickly while holding respect for the agency and choice of shelter residents at the same time, especially if they have health or substance use barriers. And while the proposed rule does allow exemptions for, quote, individual, if, if individuals, quote, "demonstrate active engagement and participation in home, in housing navigation services," unquote, given what we know about how staff treats residents and the limited capacity of case management staff, do we really trust staff and providers who have been shown to be unfair and overwhelmed with the ability to make that kind of call? We have serious concerns about those exemptions would not be given out fairly or equitably, and concerns about the city's ability to enforce and oversee the implementation of this rule. We have data that highlights conditions and services provided in shelters are problematic, and we need research-driven policy solutions and for shelters to be held accountable. Maintaining the status quo of important shelter conditions is not that. A ninety-day shelter stay rule is not that. In fact, from M O H S's own data shared today, the one shelter with a ninety-day stay limit had the lowest percentage of permanent housing exit rate out of all city-funded shelters shared in that slide. It is incumbent upon the city to never fall for the fallacy, the fallacy of, quote-unquote, "tough love" in normal times, but especially right now. We know that these kinds of ninety-day stay rules and other policies like it make it easier to criminalize, find and arrest our unhoused neighbors, and that does not solve homelessness. In fact, it makes it harder for folks to stay and get stably housed. But by instituting these kinds of rules and maintaining unsafe, unclean and undignified shelters, we show, we see that M O H S and the city can reinforce the cycle and trauma of homelessness, but it could also be a part of solving it. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to share our work.
So I wanted HUN to provide their data because we all have the reality means testers. I say that because I could tell you today that I could say I'm a great council person, but I could walk down the street and somebody say something like, yeah, I'm doing a good job. Somebody in the next, say, um, reality is real. Everyone, there can be two truths at the same time. And Director, I, I heart-heartedly know your heart, right? We, we may disagree, but I know that you're trying to meet the, the needs of residents and I see how hard it was to hear those results. And I just want to, human to human at this moment, say that like, this is not an indictment of you. This is an indictment of who we are as a society and how we need to really think about humanity. I think, how can I say this? I'm torn because as a human, we try to do the best job that we can. I see we have providers in the room, we have people who are doing the work to finance some of these things, we have our state partners here. We live in a society and human services where the imperfect is always what we're presented each day. And I want to say that I recognize you have the imperfect that you face every day in terms of what society is. But I want to make sure that you understand that like, it was hard for me to hear those survey results when I met with them weeks ago and then to see the numbers that were posted here today. And for me, there has to be, we're And for me, there has to be, where's the middle and where is the true reality of what people are experiencing? And I hope that we leave with this hearing that we are willing to work to meet where that middle ground is. And hearing the ninety day shelter rule, I understand the, the financial implications, the necessary pressures that are coming from the federal government. I also understand the implications for people who are experiencing this trauma and how it may be difficult because they may be cussing you off because something else happened outside of the building before they got to the shelter, or they have now been diagnosed with something else that they didn't actually know they had. There's a lot of human element in that, but I want to leave this conversation today, before I do public testimony, with saying acknowledging your good work. I don't, I don't want to leave here and say that your job is hard. You're doing way better than your past, but it's such a Lord Jesus, Lord Jesus. But my, my standard expectations is to go better. And I'm willing to be a partner with going better. Want to recognize that tonight, my questions were made based off of the missteps that I have documented and seen along the way with the agency, and that I'm willing to help you fix them and work with this council to fix them. Because once the shutdown is over with, I don't know what's on the other side of it in terms of what's going to happen with HUD funding. But I know that there are people who will drastically need all of our brains, our talents, our time, and most importantly, our treasure to fix the system that address their needs. So I just want to give you some comments before we go to public testimony. Do you mind if I allow her to have one more question?
Thank you. Director, the, can we talk a little bit about this ninety day strategy here? Where I, I understand what, I thought that, for some reason, I had heard a hundred and eighty or something like that, but can you talk a little bit about what's happening here? I'm very hopeful that the, the work that we're doing to create, to make sure that there is a path for folks to be able to get into housing, that we're, if we're, if we're going to say that there's this limit, which I don't necessarily agree with, but if we're going to say that there's this limit, there has to be everything in place to make sure that folks have housing at the end of that. And rather than just back on the street because they're going to be back in.
I think it's two things. One, in twenty twenty four, we, we got almost twenty thousand people that called the shelter hotline for bed, right? So part of what we, we have to look at is our homeless response system as a whole. And what are we doing, number one, to increase case management and support in the shelters to create an opportunity for people to become gainfully employed, all the resources, so that they can exit the shelter successfully? What we can't continue to do is tell people no every single day that they call this line asking for help and support. We have to create system flow. The shelter, the, the ninety day policy is in draft form. Like, this was something that came up not as a result of, of MOHS just saying, huh, let's come up with a ninety day. This was a lot of feedback. This was our COC, this was our Shelter Transformation Committee, this was our, this was our community saying, how long can people remain in shelter? We have some people that has been in shelter for years. We have people that have declined housing offers to permanent supportive housing and permanent housing for various reasons, but at the same time, they have housing offers and they're remaining in shelter. There are so many factors that goes into that, including the fear of leaving the shelter that I recognize. But at some point, we have to, number one, recognize that this federal landscape is shifting and the need for shelter is, is something that other people that's experiencing homelessness for the first time need. A lot of the items that they mentioned in their survey, I, it doesn't matter if it's a city funded shelter or not, right? We don't want those to be anybody's experiences. So I will do my best to work alongside some of the agencies that was a part of that shelter survey. But I shared what was the experience for the people that's in our shelters now to try to explain what's happening, but I will do my part in work with those other shelter providers. But the reality is those many agencies don't have the funding that MOHS has for case management and supportive services. That's just the reality. So we have, I can, the length of stay policy was not about doing harm. It's about creating flow into our ecosystem. It's in draft form. Our Shelter Transformation Committee is an open group. So anyone is welcome to join in on that committee to make sure that their voice and their feedback is given to the policy before it even has a chance at going live.
Right. No, I appreciate that. And I, what I, what I just want to make sure is that, like you said, that there is that flow, that we're not saying it's ninety days, you gotta go. It's, hey, we've got housing for you, we have this. And I get, and it's complicated because I had, we worked on a case where somebody wanted a three bedroom, and there wasn't one available, but there was a two bedroom or something like that. And so what does that, what does that look like? And we don't have to go to the specifics here because I really want to hear from the public at this point. But something that we should, obviously during the public, I'm, you're, I'm assuming you're going to put this out for public comment, or I'm sure that you're going to get those kinds of, of, of questions. So I just wanted to make sure that we, we place that on the table so that we can at least have that conversation at some other, at some other time. But I'm looking forward to public testimony and grateful that everybody stuck around. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just make an addition comment to that? When we talk about the length of stay, this is not necessarily the Mayor's Office of Home Services that is requesting this, this goes through the KTM of Care. I want to be clear that this is in the early stages of this. This isn't finite. It goes through all the different committees. That includes the lived experience advisory council. That includes those with lived experience and other fashions of providers that make consistent comments. Then that comes to the full board for a vote. It is by no means to say that ninety days is the, is the term of policy that someone would be exiting the shelters with nowhere to go. That is making its way. We are hearing different things and different numbers, as you even commented, a hundred and eighty days. So that's somewhere around ninety days for single persons, a hundred and twenty days for families with a thirty to sixty day option. That's still making its way. We've heard a hundred and eighty days and more. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that that is in its infancy stage and working its way, as the director said, through the shelter transformation, but it's going through what the process is for the KTM of Care. I also would like to just make for the record that as the chairman of the COC, I have attended these shelters on scheduled visits and on non-scheduled visits. I have also looked at rooms that have cases where folks have said they have had mold. I've gone there to see it myself. We have made recommendations to the Mayor's Office of Home Services, which they have acted swiftly when we have seen condensation and other things that may be about mold or other things. So to make it clear that the KTM of Care, which is independent of the Mayor's Office of Home Services, is, is waiting and willing to help. I myself have received calls, texts at three and four in the morning from residents at these shelters who send me pictures, and I've talked to the Mayor's Office of Home Services to find out what exactly is being done. Give me a timeline of what that looks like and then go out to see it for myself. So there is action from the COC, and I just want to make sure, Mr. Chairman, that's on the record. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question, colleagues, before I open it up for public testimony? Perfect. Mr. Mark Council.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, my name is Mark Council. I'm the legal organizer of Housing Our Neighbors. I'm the legal organizer of Housing Our Neighbors. I want to thank you for this opportunity to be here. When we came out September twenty, September twenty six, we had no intentions to try to hurt anybody or to put anybody on blast, anything like that. We just wanted to make sure that everybody was be accountable for the work that they was doing. The stories that you have heard that Housing Our Neighbors have mentioned, it was stories that we have heard from the shelters. Myself, myself and several other members in our group are formerly homeless. Myself was homeless myself. But I know what's goes on in these shelters and everything. And none of the, and none of these stories that we had stated September twenty six was caused by us. These were stories that they had said themselves that what was going on in these shelters. I have seen firsthand what goes on there. People have actually called and say complaints about this, that, and everything else. All housing our neighbors would like to do is just hold people accountable for. We not mad at anybody, that's not our intentions. We not trying to get nobody fired or anything like that. I think the Director Simmons is doing a great job, but we just like to hold people accountable for the work that they was doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Council. I'm going to go with Kyle Wong.
Good evening. I'm a, hoping to provide testimony in my experience navigating homeless services as a clinical social worker in Baltimore City and also as a Housing Our Neighbors, a, a part of the group. For one, the list of shelters provided by MOHS is outdated with many numbers being disconnected. Two, I've had to make five or six calls at the beginning of the day to the hotline to be told that, e- even if I was able to get ahold of someone, to be told that there's no shelter space. I was also told that there are only two people staffed to answer calls. Third, I also found out that Beans and Bread was without an intake coordinator for the better part of the summer. And this is one of the places that are referred to most to get connected to coordinated access. Yeah, and many of the families that I personally work with do not meet the qualification to receive support through coordinated access, as they are not deemed chronically homeless. I know there is a big push or talk about the goals to kind of make shelters a short stop, and I think these would be families that would be, if they got the right support, would be quickly out of shelters. And as an agency too, we found that like the process for coordinated access is very long and cumbersome, and that it's no guarantee that someone will actually get connected to the system. And so I think with all these like low hanging fruit that we're talking about, why is MOHS proposing a ninety or twenty day stay cap for shelter residents as, as if this will be a fix? Even from the data that they provided, many shelters are, you know, I think the average stay is, you know, four to six months, if not more. So I think I'm just kind of curious where those numbers are coming from. And it doesn't seem like they're actually founded in any sort of, uh, uh, yeah, I guess, you know, evidence based practice. So we're just concerned about that. And I think also just creating this arbitrary stay cap will do little to support people and will likely increase street homelessness and put people in unsafe situations. We know that the winters are deadly, and also Maryland this past year had the highest number of deaths during the summer. Like over the, yeah, the highest number of deaths in the, in the last decade this past summer. And I think that's only going to increase, especially as climate change gets increasingly gets worse. So simply put, this proposal will actually kill people. And I just want to put that on the record, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Lord, my, I need glasses. Ned Nessbill? I believe it's Ned Nessbill, sorry.
Oh, good. Hello. Thank you for having me. I want to speak to the proposed limit on shelter stays. And just to reiterate a couple of things, that people stay in the shelter long term because there's not housing. A limit doesn't make that radically different. That's magical thinking. It'd be cool, I'd be cool with that, right? Ninety days, one eighty days, whatever it is, if there's housing on the other side. But a shelter time limit is cruel. It happens in other counties and it creates havoc. People are out on the streets again. It doesn't work the way it might be intended to, and then they have to apply again and go through the whole system. Right? So they're calling you again in three months, essentially. And while they're on the streets, maybe MOHS guests gets called if they set up a tent or if they exist in public and then they get their stuff taken and thrown away. And we see that happen with encampment sweeps all the time. So I don't want to see that happening to our neighbors. And like others have said, this is, I mean, how much time do I have? This, if it were to go through, would be a choice to make now while homelessness is being criminalized more and more all the time. It would tell me what our city values, and I think that would not be providing housing to our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ned. Minister Christina Flowers again.
Push this button right here? Okay. I want to speak from lived experience myself as a homeless advocate specialist, and I want to speak because I feel like I have engaged probably everyone within this circle. Hey, Daniel, good to see you. And I know for so many facts, thank you, Housing Our Neighbors, because you know, accuracy is one thing that we all have experienced when we have listened, learned, and worked with these individuals three hundred and sixty-five days a year. That's the commitment of grassroots, that's the commitment of housing. We operate a high volume organization, and I'm proud to say, as a self-funded, independent organization, we use partnerships to sustain us. And when you're dealing at a level of partnerships from hospitals, agencies, and a lot of them say the same thing, they want more resources. They want more opportunities not to discharge their patients with nowhere to go. And that's where it needs to be more. As a person that sit on the committee of the COC and the transformation, I know individuals work effortlessly every day to make sure these individuals get the things that they need. But I also know it's bigger than homeless services. It's bigger than Director Simmons. It's bigger than anyone else that's sitting over here because we still have people living on the streets under the bridge and living in places that we have to engage them every day. So as long as we can face that it's bigger than some of us, then we can start addressing the real elephant in the room. When you have one agency that is even now currently under investigation of the IG department, the TIME organization, I can bring the elephant in the room because I deal with them every day. I have a folder of information. Everything could be factual, but we got to start working together in every area or it makes all of us look like the big elephant in the room. So if we could just get to that handle and pulling things together, this is not a one person burden. You know, this is Director number six in this city, and it's not just her. So we got to get better. Let's do better so one person ain't feeling the burden. Let's just do better.
Is there any other public testimony before I recess this hearing? With that being said, we are now in recess.